City of Alpine, Texas will hold a workshop meeting. My script, my screen went blank, meeting at 3:30 PM on Tuesday, July 21st, 2020 via Zoom conference in the city of Alpine, Texas. Meeting login details may be found at www.cityofalpine.com/meetinglink for the purpose of considering the test agenda. This notice is posted pursuant to the Texas Open Meeting Act section 51.043, Texas Government Code. This computer. Okay, members of the audience will be provided an opportunity to address the council of any agenda item at just determination of a quorum and proof of notice of the meeting. Zoom meeting, comment, and question rules and procedures are listed on the city website. Remarks will be limited to a total of three minutes per person. Please email your name to Megan Antrim, director.finance@ci.alpine.txt, TX.us. If you have a petition or other information pertaining to your subject, please email it to the city secretary beforehand. All names wanting to make public, public comment for the meeting will be cued upon and given to the mayor at that section of the meeting. The mayor will call on those individuals one at a time and our meeting moderator will take you off mute to make your comments. This will function the same as the existing signup sheet in council chambers. Please note, you must include your full name, first and last, along with the ward you reside in or have been of interest in. You do not live or own property in the city of Alpine. State that in your email. State law generally prohibits the council from discussing or taking action on any issue or not included on the agenda, but if appropriate, the council may schedule the topic for future discussion or refer the matter to staff. No personal attacks on council members or city staff will be allowed. The mayor and/or city council members may call a point of order to stop personal attacks. If an individual continues to persecute an elected official or staff member enemy, you may be barred. The meeting, the call is waiting to order. City Secretary, do we have a quorum?
Mayor, we do have a quorum and the notice was posted at 1:00 PM on July 17, 2020.
Okay, very good. Has Ramon joined in yet?
No, we do not have Ramon or Maria on yet.
Okay. We'll go ahead and continue since we do have a quorum. And I'll turn it over. We'll go to a workshop and I'll turn it over to city manager, Mr. Zimmer.
Honorable Mayor, City Council, went ahead and sent you the slide deck that we'll cover today. And about a week ago, week ago Monday, Megan and I had sent out the the draft budget. This was post our previous workshop. Some of the elements that we certainly had discussed at the workshop as well as the previous work were all integrated into pulling together this, this budget presentation. And so with that being said, what I wanted to do today was walk through this slide deck and talk first and foremost about some of our top level data. And from that juncture, we'll go through some of the summary pages, actually go through all the summary pages. And then certainly, this is meant to be an interactive workshop and want to field questions first and foremost from, from our elected officials. What I see as far as attendance on the call right now is staff members who've been engaged with us informing these slides too. But if we, we do have any community input, we'll, we'll jump into that too. So with that being said, the first real slide with data on it gives you a representation similar to what we see in our posting on the, call it on the, on the paper every year when we take what is our, you know, it's kind of our combined budget summary and it looks across all of the main different departments and divisions and looks to see how we're allocating dollars. And so from, from a top down, you know, we're certainly looking at the revenue side on, on the left side of the screen and our expenditures on the right side of the screen. The the probably the biggest thing to note when you look at these elements is, you know, we're from a revenue perspective, we're not projecting, at least on the left, left-hand side, we're not projecting any sort of big change in this next year. You know, ad valorem tax, we've, we've been working back with Betty Jo Rooney on where we think we're going to end up knowing that we keep the, the tax rate the same. We've still got it pegged as hang on one second, I'm admitting a couple people, John Waters and Lorena Crespo. So on on the ad valorem tax, we have it at 1.97 million again this next year. We do anticipate that might come up about 20,000, but it's not overly aggressive increase. And that's with keeping the tax rate the same. You know, looking back down through our enterprise funds, some of the conversation that we've had relative to water and sewer, what are we going to look at as far as increases in utility billing? And, you know, the output from last workshop was see what we can do to hold the line and fill in the gaps on some of our expenses that we need relative to staffing with our existing revenue stream and then look at future utility billing increases to be tied to infrastructure improvements. So with that method in place, you'll see that, you know, we really left our water and sewer, same saying from a budget perspective from, from this year to the next. Sanitation, recycling will contract has, you know, a small increase embedded in that. You know, certainly COVID has challenged us to really think about impacts. We look at our last 90 days of sales tax. For the city, the last 90 days, we've experienced a 1.5% increase from what we had done the previous year. And so with, with that being said, we're not really projecting much increase on sales tax, but we're also not projecting a decrease either. So that's really our left-hand side of the chart. Questions on that?
Okay. The only, Eric, the only question I would have is under, is everything, you know, looks pretty close. You know, it's 13.35 versus 13.6. And as you mentioned, property tax will wiggle and all that. The, the one difference that seems to be larger than I would have expected is revenue associated with the gas fund, 8%, given we were warm this last year. How, how do you expect we're going to come out in terms of this year relative to the 2.1 it's forecast for next year?
Yeah. So, so the reason, and good question, the reason why we projected that up is when we looked at the snapshot through, what, that was the end of June. So we took through nine months and we looked at that revenue stream and then we projected it out over a year, knowing that we had a warm winter. And so we came out at 2.1.
Oh, wow. So we used more gas?
Yeah. Yeah. We've really done almost exceptionally well on the revenue there compared to it being a warm winter. So that was why we, why we went up a little bit there.
That makes sense. Okay.
Now, on the expenditure side, the first thing I was cautioned when you look at this is to know that we had committed to a large project on the streets and it was a multi-year project. And so year one, we're in the middle of getting a lot of good work done. That column, the 1.272 million on the streets was what our amended budget was before we came back and added that street allocation. So out of the, the, it's close to 1.8 million in street work to do through the phases. We're really projecting to spend a million of that this year and then 800,000 next year. So when you look at a 59.49% increase, a lot of that's predicated on the remaining sections of that initial project that we approved early, earlier this calendar year. And so that's, that's a big driver when you look at the bottom line. The other piece that we look at certainly centers around our police. And I've got a slide that we'll get to here in a few slides. It'll talk about some of the items that we're working through from a police department. I've got Chief Martin on the, on the call today as well, and he'll be able to discuss through what he's seen on his perspective. Animal control, we'll, we've certainly got Jennifer on the call today too. Most of that increase is really driven on some of the capex stuff that we talked about on our five-year CIP. Building maintenance, you know, our driver on that really is that renovation that we're looking to do over at the old schoolhouse, though we're really targeting more grant dollars through the coronavirus relief fund for that. Though, as Marcy reminds Megan and I, those dollars have to be spent before the end of this calendar year. But certainly, those are items that if we were not able to accomplish or we didn't feel comfortable funding, we could, we could certainly step away or step back from. The on the utility side, when we look at our water and sewer, the, the real drivers in the increases there relative to staffing, we talked about originally, we felt like that chart that we talked about, that first budget workshop, that we were about five people short. We've been able to create a balanced budget on our water and sewer through, you know, our current revenues, but then also allocate for those five positions in this year's budget. So we were, we were pretty stoked about that, if I can use the word stoked.
You're dating yourself.
So, Eric, sort of sense, but, and, and then finally, you know, you kind of look down, the, the airport and gas fund are a couple of the other double-digit increases. The airport, we know that's driving from that 90,000 on the lighting project, which is an absolute must-have for airport. And then gas fund between the rectifier and a couple pieces of safety gear. That's what is really driving more of that increase in projected spend this year. And so that, and we've, we've, we, you know, really historically taken, we call it gas fund reserves, but it's really that equity transfer from the gas fund to help pay for paving, whether it's with our streets or with our airport. So we continue to leave that as a budgetary item. That's that gas fund reserve.
Eric, I have a question.
Sure.
On the water and sewer, is that enough? You said you budgeted for five more people. Is that enough?
Well, that gets us four. That gets us four of the five. So then when we, when we look at longer-term, Lucy, what we want to do with our collection infrastructure, so the stuff that we're, you know, bringing the, the, the water in from the well sites on, will, we're working on that overarching plan so that we can deliver that to council and contemplate the utility billing increase tied to that infrastructure, but not, you know, our day-to-day operations. We, we look to be able to accomplish that and add those, those four employees this year.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions on this slide?
Yeah, I've got one and let's go down to expenditures on a police department.
Yes.
And it concerns the canine.
Yes. Yes, the canine is included in that, Mayor.
Okay, obviously there is a need for a canine, but, hey, Eric. Hello?
Yeah, can, can you hear me?
No, I can.
Okay.
We can, I can hear both.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I had a question on the police, on the canine.
Sure.
Okay. Have we determined where that canine is going to be housed at? Because I've gotten several calls in Texas concerning the fact that it was going to be based at night in Marathon. And I guess the chief could probably answer that one.
Yep, um, yep, he's unmuted now.
Okay. Chief?
Good evening. The, it hasn't been determined what officer would be assigned the canine. However, I would want to keep the canine in the city to be available to us 24/7.
Okay, very good, because those are the concerns that, you know, I was getting about the canine being housed in Marathon. So I did some research on it about how long a driver can be detained before he must be released. And there were quite a few cases where the Supreme Court ruled that in, you know, 20 to 30 minutes is the most you could detain a driver. Okay. And after that, you have to set him free. And if canine was based in Marathon, then by the time that officer would drive from Marathon to Alpine, you, you know, you're two up at least 25, 30 minutes there already in addition to the stop that the officer has already made. And what there was, the court was ruling was that reasonable stop by the time it takes an officer to stop you, ID himself, ask and tell, and tell you, inform me while you're being stopped, ask for your driver license and, and insurance, and he runs a check on you, all that time is going against the clock. And what I was concerned when I had those, those questions posed to me was that we're setting up ourselves for a civil suit, which most of them have been won by the drivers for being detained longer than necessary. So I just, you know, in order for me to support this, I would want, absolutely want that canine to be housed here in Alpine, in the city proper.
Yes. Okay. And the canine, on that aspect of it, and the law states a reasonable amount of time. So the, the issue is defining what is reasonable. There, there could be incidences where the canine was here in Alpine with a officer, that that officer may be somewhere out of town and have to go home, get the canine. So what it boils down to is what's defined as reasonable.
Right. And that's, that's what the Supreme Court, they didn't give you definite time, but they said an average time of 20 to 30 minutes is what they consider reasonable.
Well, but that depends on the traveling distance. As long as, say, if, just, I'm not planning on it being stationed in Marathon, but say it is, if, if it took an hour and a half to get here, well, that's unreasonable. If it took 30 minutes to get here, that would be reasonable.
Right. So we'd be paying an officer to drive a city vehicle to Marathon?
No, I'm, I'm not letting a city vehicle stay in Marathon, nor am I really wanting to, I, I don't want to let the, if we're awarded a canine, I don't want it to be in Marathon and be that far away. I want it here in the city to be available 24/7.
Right. Very good. Cause that, that was my concern. So when that was posed, I mean, I got to thinking about it. And I says, yeah, you know, I wouldn't support it if it was based in Marathon. It'd have to be in the city because, you know, that's taxpayers' money that we're wasting. And, you know, the way things are right now, you know, we're, we're pretty, being pretty frugal on these monies and how they're being spent. So that only issue in Alpine, I can vote on it. I would have to put an objection that I did not support that dog being housed outside of Alpine.
No, and I agree. I'm, I'm not planning on the dog being housed outside of the city. Let, let me just say, if an officer lives three to five miles outside of the city, I'm fine with that.
Yeah.
Their policy says 15 miles currently.
Right, correct.
So right now, I'm going to abide by that policy, but preferably having the, the canine stationed in the city limits. Most of our officers live in the city.
Correct. Yeah. And that's, I mean, I could wholly support it that way.
Yes, sir.
And I hope council also looks at it that way because, you know, it would be a tech, a waste of taxpayer money by having him housed anywhere outside the city limits within a decent or driving distance.
I agree with you, Mayor. I mean, especially in my ward.
Right. So, you know, that's something that, you know, that, that I'd really consider and I'd hope that you would base him in Alpine.
Yeah. And currently, you know, I can say I'm going to abide by the current policy in effect and it can't be any more than 15 miles outside of the city.
Okay. Okay, that's, that was my question.
Okay. All right. Any, any other questions on this slide?
No.
All right. Jumping forward, the next slide really outlines our debt. The two boxes on the top and the bottom right are what, what gets displayed on our annual audit. Shows, you know, basically that we've, you know, entering this fiscal year, we have 4.451 million in outstanding debt. And then if you look at our fiscal year to date, what we've paid so far out of the general fund, we've paid 129,234, water fund, almost 234,000, sewer fund, about 11 and a half thousand. We still have a payment of about 85K doing water and approximately about 35K in interest. End of this fiscal year, basically we'll be at about 4 million in debt. So it's good, good news story for us. Any questions on our debt?
Yeah, just a comment that says the majority of it still is tied to that bond that runs out to 2036. So we got a couple of days left to go on that thing.
Yes, yes. The, the one will pay off this, this next year.
Yep.
Before the end of this next fiscal year and then the little one right after that. But yeah, and I think, I think Megan, I don't know if you're able to comment on that larger one. We, we had tried to do, ask some questions about whether we could pay that off early, but I don't think we can, right?
No, they won't let us pay off anything really early. We've tried, we definitely tried with the 2012. They didn't want us to do that one. We did look at doing a refund bond, like combining several of them so that our payment would be either one big payment a year instead of all these multiple payments. And then COVID-19 hit and any thought process on combining was basically kind of put to the side.
Yeah. What's, what's the nominal interest rate, Megan?
Three something.
It's okay. You just answered my question. It's greater than three. The bondholders have no interest in paying off early.
Exactly.
It's low risk, decent interest rate. So, yep. Nice try.
Okay. Any other questions on this slide?
Nope.
All right. And went ahead and just included our interest in sinking fund information here as well. Outlining what, you know, what those, those payments will look like out of Fund 75 for a general fund this next year.
So just going forward, it's relatively flat at about 150,000 then until 2036?
For the general fund, yes.
Okay.
The, the big difference is most of our debt is tied to the water and wastewater fund. So that one does fluctuate a little bit. We will have some big principal payments as we get closer to the payoff dates.
Well, interesting. Okay. But we got, we got a decade before that happens, if I understand correctly. Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So, so the good news is we were, you know, looking at this chart, you know, 2016, sending, we're spending three quarters of a million on debt. Then we went down to 600,000, now in the 150 range. So that's a huge improvement relative to where we're spending money on debt.
Well, closer to about 450 to 500, Rick, when we add the water in. But yeah, we have, yeah, we have reduced those payments by over quarter million in that timeframe.
Okay. But this is, so is this only the one for the general fund then? I see.
Yeah, this is just a general fund.
Ah, okay. Yeah, you might just want to think about it from how you talk about it, Eric and Megan. People don't know if it's general fund debt or, you know, the, the enterprise funds, just kind of lump all that together. I know you're trying to keep council up to speed, but this, you just heard my interpretation of it. So we're still spending a half month a year.
Okay.
Thanks.
Perfect. Thank you. The next slide, I wanted to, you know, get, get everybody kind of back up to speed. We had Marcy present for us back in early May on what we were doing with our grants. And if you looked through the workbook that we sent out, you saw a lot of dollars that were not included in this budget, but they were put to the side saying, hey, if we get these monies, okay, we're going to go ahead and spend this year. So we're not committing to some of the spend until we actually get the actual grant. And sometimes it's a, you know, I call it a little bit of a cat and a mouse game. You have to commit that you'll provide the dollars if there's a matching. And so when you think about the CDBG grant that we're going after for the sidewalks downtown, that is something that requires about a three and a half percent match for us. That's about 17,000. If we get that, yes, we will take dollars out of our Public Works Streets Improvement Fund to go ahead and pay our three and a half percent match on that. So that's that community development block grant that we're, we're keying in on this year. The you know, the other pieces are really just more of, you know, bottom right quadrant shows us our FEMA CARES Act funding. The dollars that, that we're using there, some of that is what we're targeting to go ahead and do the Alpine Schoolhouse building. The letter that the mayor signed along with the city of Waco and several other cities below half million population were asking for the ability to allocate dollars beyond just straight testing and medical personnel. And so we believe that TDM or the governor's office will, will go ahead and free those dollars up for us as well. But really just wanted to kind of give you a flash up on this. Let me take Marcy off mute real quick and see if there's anything of high importance she wants to add in here. Marcy, are you?
There we go. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, I would just like to note, the, at the very bottom on the left-hand column starts the funds that are obligated for grants, and that is exactly what Eric was talking about. There are some, you know, there's a lot of good opportunities in those projects and we don't have to spend the money until And we don't have to spend the money until we are awarded the project. But, you know, best case scenario is we would get all of those projects, and that's a whole lot of improvement for the city. But that als- that is also a higher commitment for our dollar match that we would have to provide at that point. I mean, we if we go after all of these grants, we are technically on the hook for all of the matching funds. Um, I think I think you get a great return on the mon- you know, on our investment as a city with these projects. But the council does need to consider, okay, if we were awarded all of these, you know, we have to have that, uh, you know, four hundred thousand dollars to pay for all of the matching funds for these. So these might be the ones that need to be prioritized or you know, to see if we can break it down um in a couple of years. That there are different options, but I think that uh, that category of obligated funds is is really one to consider the hardest in this or the most in this budget discussion.
Yeah, the um, you know, earlier this year, we dedicated the fifty thousand towards the splash pad and as we know that uh, project may uh, may go different based on what we're learning from COVID nineteen. And uh, that'll be something that will certainly keep council to breast on and know if we need to reallocate our position on that. Uh, of course, the one above it is that mower we talked about in the last couple of council meetings. And then the one below that is that comprehensive trails project plan, um, phase one of three that really helps us utilize those dollars that Energy Transfer Partners gave to build out that trail system. And so Marcy's starting to work on that. Uh, but those are uh, dollars that are obligated in our reserve funds by council.
So as I look at, you know, the list, you know, most of them are in the, you know, twenty, thirty thousand dollar range, which are bearable and you hope to hit the jackpot, as Marcy says, which you may or may not. The the only one that gives me pause is the question on uh, Pueblo Nuevo Park, which is a fifty fifty, what's our strategy if that one hits? We gotta come up with two hundred grand. Where will we find that?
So he he here's the strategy that um, Megan and I have been talking a little bit with Marcy about, but mostly Megan and I. So right now, we have fifty thousand allocated for the splash pad at Coconut Park. Um, if that project goes away because splash pads just aren't deemed um, healthy, then uh, we slim the actual project down at Pueblo Nuevo to about three hundred and sixty thousand dollars, uh, which gives us a hundred and eighty thousand dollar uh obligation, and then we fund that over three years.
Right, okay, that works, okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, it it's the right strategy, but that that uh, that park could use the help and it's the great investment. And that helps you just spread it out over the three years cuz you'd hate to have to go borrow money. That doesn't make sense. That's the way to go work it. Okay, thanks.
Right. So so that was our thought.
Good.
I like that.
Sure you do, Lucy. You've been asking.
I know. Yes.
Let's get the kids in out of the street and in the park.
Yes, right now they they're roaming around in the street.
So we we really know we could get a lot done at that dollar amount. And uh, it's gonna take a few years to build it out anyway, so we'll fund along the way, which the the grant allows us to do.
So it it then if I go down to lower right under the FEMA's CARES Act, you know, the Economic Development Administration Assistance Plan, you know, you'd love to cash in and get a hundred fifty thousand dollars. Do we have a strategy about how we would employ those dollars? Cuz it's about working unemployment rate, which says to me, training, education, skills, but is there any thought on that?
Yeah, so that goes back to that discussion we had had uh on economic development a few meetings back. Um, and what we're looking at from an incubator space.
Okay, super, got it, okay.
Um, so yeah, that's that's our strategy on that. And we we've actually had a follow-up meeting since then um, as well as engage with the library. So kind of phase one, as far as training, developing of the knowledge workers, I think we've got that uh, in motion, uh, or at least close to being in motion. And then uh, phase two is really this this piece of it, Rick.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Any other questions on the slide?
Okay.
All right. Well, let's go to a headcount slide. Everybody likes to know how we're doing on staffing. Um, I did make a little note at the bottom, when I'd come back in September twenty nineteen, there was a hundred and fourteen positions uh noted on the spreadsheet that had been handed to me. Right now, I just mapped out from uh each department what existing employees we have and then uh, what this budget would uh would project as far as new employees. The three on the water, the one on the sewer, you see that in the bottom third, and then uh one on uh PD. I've also uh, you know, made notes on on which ones of these are part-time as well. So out of the eighty-two currently, um, about nine part-time, eight part-time, I'm sorry. Any questions on our staffing levels right now? And then I wanted to really jump into the police department. And what are the drivers on that expense request uh or expense increase request, knowing that at a national level, there's there's dialogue and discussion about defunding. Um, you know, why in the city of Alpine would we be looking at increasing uh our spend? And so some of the data points, uh, certainly our continuing work on drug enforcement in the area, you know, K nine piece we talked about uh earlier uh in this workshop. And then uh, you know, we have continued work with CBP and the sheriff's office relative to immigration issues. Um, and it really the salary increases that we're looking at are linking licensing and certifications to provide uh ru- real competitive pay against the local agencies. And and what's been happening um is, you know, retention is is impacted because uh, we become this training ground and there's lots of other uh good agencies in the area. And so we've got to keep our our pay competitive in order to ensure that we retain the employees. Um, so you know, a eleven and a half percent increase, it's not all salaries. Um, but these are the main drivers, uh certainly uh wage increases and then K nine. Um, uh, but then if you look back from twenty twelve to twenty twenty, there were, you know, certainly fairly modest increases um in in the budget over that period of time. So questions on uh, police?
Uh, on that one, uh, see, imagine we do need to stay competitive. You know, why should we be training for somebody else? And you know, every so often, we have to roll it roll it over and wind up start from scratch again. So I think we do need to be competitive with the area, surrounding area here. Uh, I don't see where defunding them would would help a many. I think it just diminish our police force. So I wholly support an increase in their in the pay increase uh for them to stay competitive and to stay in Alpine.
Well, definitely, we need them.
And in tying it to the licensing and certification, so that was, you know, another file I sent out end of last week, um, was really all of the licensing and certifications of our employees across the board. Uh, so from a a governing body, you you understand the depth that we have uh with licensing amongst our teams up to and including our police force. All right. Moving forward into our summary pages. So this was, you know, before each uh grouping of individual department budgets, uh, we took a roll-up of of each fund. The general fund is certainly our our largest of funds. Five point one four eight million in revenues in in uh this past year and projecting five point uh three seven million or three six million at this next year. What we talked about in that first roll-up uh sheet or that first was, you know, that gap between our revenue and our expenses. You see that difference at eight hundred and forty-seven thousand, uh seven hundred and eighty-four dollar difference. Now, the when I first sent out the sheet, it was eight twenty-one. I want to clarify. Megan uh did some checking of her work and some adjustments on the municipal court. That's why it went from eight twenty-one to eight forty-seven. Uh, if somebody uh has picked up on that, that that is the reason for the increase. So really what we have to look at um from a city perspective is that difference there. Um, you know, for for projected or approved expenses are greater, how would we fill that gap? And the the two primary ways we would do that would be through uh, using our Texas class capital improvement dollars that are already dedicated to the streets along with uh the unassigned fund balance. And I'm I'm gonna jump to the corresponding page with this, just so you I see how that that lines up. Uh, on the right-hand side of the page, our Texas class uh capital improvements um still sits at five hundred and seventy-one thousand or five hundred and seventy-two thousand, I'm sorry. And so that would cover a good portion of that gap. Uh, and then the remaining amount, we would look at our fund balance, which we're projecting at the end of the year to be roughly uh one million sixty-two thousand. So that's that unassigned uh fund balance. So that would be how we would address the general fund based on the expenses that we had projected. Now, we could always go through and reduce expenses too. That's always uh a solution.
So Eric, just, you know, thinking about it, I I I think the approach you've got for the street is just the right one cuz we're getting ourselves out of a hole and getting ourselves caught back up. Uh, looking forward, you know, beyond into the twenty-one, twenty-two range, uh, how how do you see, you know, I presume you would see the allocation of general fund to the streets start coming back down then to a more moderate rate. Is that your thinking?
Uh, that's what's gonna have to happen, Rick. We're we're gonna have to bring that number down uh probably on the magnitude of, you know, three fifty to five hundred thousand.
Okay.
If not more.
Yep.
I I think there's value in the balance between what we do with uh uh, the outside vendor and our team. But uh, you know, spending at the aggressive level that we have uh this year and then what we're projecting next year is really catching us up from uh underspending the previous two years.
Yeah.
The other thing that's gonna come up for council to look at in twenty twenty-one will be as we start looking at trash collection. So our contract expires in early twenty twenty-two. And we may have an opportunity and contemplate bringing that back in-house uh versus contracting out. And do you do some allocations of dollars based on uh being able to run that uh better economically and and reallocate some of those dollars to the streets longer term? Because it's the bigger pieces of equipment and the bigger trucks on the street that that are really providing us the most negative impact on our streets.
Yeah, well, and 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 the fact is, no matter how we cut it, even though we pay a flat rate uh for the contract, we're paying their capital dollars. Uh, me- meaning we're buying their equipment for them. So, you know, we're buying it, they're depreciating and all that. You gotta look and say, okay, uh, from a business model standpoint, you you'd think we ought to be able to do at least the same, if not better, given our location. So from a strategy standpoint, there certainly makes sense to look at that.
Yeah, and we could move to more single axle type vehicles, lighter weight because we're not having to drive all over the the county or multi, you know, tri-county area.
Yep.
Um, it's, you know, two or three trash trucks and run the landfill.
Yep.
Eric, would this be uh providing little bins for residents, the polycarts?
Well, that's gonna be uh the probably the other big topic of debate. And I think we need to price out both ways when you look at uh dumpster, steel can versus poly cards.
Hmm.
Um, the single easiest way to reduce uh illegal dumping in town is to migrate to poly cards.
I would just kinda say that.
So uh tha- that's gonna be a, that's gonna be a decision for council to really contemplate back with with with, you know, myself and Eddie and um, you know, Megan from a cost perspective too. But eh, you you know, one thing we gotta remember too, is our public works director, he worked here when we ran our own trash.
Hmm.
Uh, so he does have that intelligence um, relative to to how it it was done previously. And is certainly capable of of working back. And we've also got Adalina Bell on our staff. She's been uh engaged in landfill business as well. And um, we certainly have the right constructs of a group that that can help us through the decision-making process.
Right. When the city had their own uh garbage garbage pickup, were they the metal bins or how was it uh accumulated?
The dumpster, the metal. Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I wasn't here back then, so.
Yep. All right. Um, on the left-hand side of each of these summary sheets, what we wanted to do was really look at, you know, we call it, you know, kind of that cost of living or raise uh three percent. We just took our salaries across the board like we talked about in that first workshop and said, okay, if we increased our salary pool by three percent, uh, we are anticipating a health insurance uh increase. Um, simply with, you know, COVID and some of the additional medical expenses, we we believe um, that 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 is potential. And we're we're a little bit more conservative and, you know, make sure we've got it embedded in instead of having to struggle for it uh and cut things out on the back end. Um, and then some increases in our insurance as well as workers' comp. Um, so those were and unemployment. The, if you look to the right under the expense column, you come down, that really tells you what that salary difference at three percent, what that equates to uh across our general fund, uh what the benefit difference would be, that ninety thousand. So um, that was how we laid the these files out. Que- questions on the general fund?
No.
Okay. So next, we look at our water sewer sanitation. And of course, here, as we talked about earlier, there's no difference uh between what we're proposing in in revenues and what we're proposing in expenses. And that is with adding four of those five recommended employees. Um, we still have, you know, really good dollars worked in there on some of our core projects um, that, um, you know, the well improvement, the SCADA improvements. You know, certainly line extensions and things of that nature uh that that we are gonna spend on every year. And then when we think, you know, really about, you know, longer term, the priorities for the department really are predicated on getting, you know, building that staff and then really building the plan on infrastructure so that uh we can we can really work on some of that collection infrastructure over the longer term. Uh, again, on the, you know, left-hand side, we, you know, did the same method with employee cost of living, the health insurance increase. Again, on the, you know, left hand side, we, you know, did the same method with employee cost of living, the health insurance increases, liability. Workers' comp and retirement rate and unemployment, so. There is a transfer amount in there. That you'll see up in the top third proposed twenty twenty one column, one fifty one, five seventy seven. Those transfers into the into the revenue side are our EDAP annual payment. SCADA money that we we have in SCADA fund, infrastructure improvements and T C Q enforcement. Those would be represented on this next page, let me click over to that. So you see down on the bottom right. Where those dollars. Really would be coming from to accomplish that transfer, okay? So that's the method behind that, if you saw that transfer amount of one fifty one, five seventy seven, said, how did, you know, where did where did Eric and Megan come from that? Or come up with that number, that's this next page is is where we got it from. The. The net position, we certainly have a very healthy checking account right now, the. Unrestricted piece of that is about two point three million. And so when we think about longer term, what we want to do with some of the collection infrastructure. This is going to, you know, certainly play into that. It's part of the reason is that checking account grew in size, that was part of the reason Megan had been asking about paying off some of that debt early. Knowing that maybe we could reduce some of the debt and, you know, minimize the checking account a little bit. Any questions on water wastewater?
Eric, I think they, and you and I've talked about this briefly, I just worry about. Water wastewater, long term infrastructure, not so much at the processing plant, that seems to be working well, you've got the game plan for the wells to be able to get the water in. But, you know. Replacing of lines will certainly be an issue over the long term. Part of the staff after you bring on board aimed at looking at helping Scott build a strategy for that.
Yeah, so, you know, good question, one of the things that. The city had gone through was that needs assessment on water wastewater with that contract. With Park Hill Smith and Cooper. And. Rod and I have been making progress on that, primarily Rod working with their attorney. But that RFQ that went out really outlined. Some good constructs of work that needed to be done, you know, unfortunately, what Park Hill Smith and Cooper wanted to do was was much different. Than what the city had presented in that RFQ. So now that we're working with Jacob Martin. I've asked Scott to actually, you know, I had this conversation last week about sharing with Jacob Martin that RFQ. To get their perspective on it and then something that we would go back out and do. A a collection of of. Responses on that from an RFQ perspective. And then look at, can we really accomplish those elements of that original RFQ? For something in the hundred and twenty five to hundred and fifty thousand range. That would really not only dig deeper into our infrastructure on the capital improvement side. But it also would look at policies from a T C E Q perspective. And ensure that we're managing to that through our operating manuals and so forth, and and those were all items that were originally included. In that RFQ from twenty eighteen. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does, so. Would you hope by this time next year, you'll have? That a much better handle on that and know what the capital requirements might be going out for the longer term?
Yes, in fact, I'd like to really be there before the end of this calendar year.
Super, good.
I think, I think that gives us. Better opportunity around planning. And, you know, I think too, the quicker we can get that together, I mean, part of what Scott and I talked about is the quicker we can get that together. The quicker it makes sense to talk with the community about utility billing and what what a move forward rate should be or what it should look like.
Yeah, good.
Any other questions?
No.
Okay. Let's jump into our airport. A. You know, the primary item that we we talked about obviously was the ninety thousand for that project this. With with the lighting project out there. What that that payment this next year does to us from a budgetary perspective is it. Creates this difference of seventy thousand five hundred and sixty eight. Reason why it's not quite ninety is because if you think about it like this year, we had allocated dollars, you know, in the twenty thousand range for a mower, right? So next year, this is really the only thing we're really focusing on is our ninety thousand there. When we think forward from that, how do we solve for that? We solve for it with the twenty eight, two fifty, that's already in text dot aviation. And then the checking account is a little over, we're projecting a little over fifty thousand the end of this year. The other thing Scott and I talked about is how do we get a little bit more aggressive on? Some of the flight patterns that are traversing from, call it California, going. East and then some of the eastern states going to the west. And how do we advertise to get them, these jets to land here for their their refuel? I think, Rick, you could probably speak more to that with you being a pilot. But I do know, and you know, Scott's identified with me as well, that we really need to work on capturing some of that business too. Being aggressive on our service and pricing to get those folks to drop in here because they're dropping in all around us.
Yep, yep. Well, yeah, part of it too, Eric, and you and I have talked about it, just how fuel prices get listed on the automated systems. We're still way out of whack, not even close to the reality of the prices we're charging. I just haven't had a chance to get back with you or Scott on that, but, you know, we're charging. You know, if I were to pull it up today, it's like four dollars and two bits and we're actually charging like, you know, three, three thirty a gallon, and I'm thinking. If I'm a, if I'm a guy about to go buy a thousand gallons of fuel, I'm going to go somewhere else because. Our prices we're charging, at least we're advertising, are a lot higher than we're actually charging, which is nuts. So this is all part of, our guys have got to be much more attentive, they're trying to run a business, not just be city employees and. That's one of my pet peeves, so we still have that issue, I think that opportunity.
Yeah, but but and I appreciate those comments because I do think that's part of the way we solve closing the, you know, the gap beyond. You know, cer- certainly we got the airport reserve that twenty eight thousand two fifty, you know, we're going to use that, right, it's there. For these types of projects, but we'd like to protect against as much of that. In our checking account and be able to go out and earn the money to pay for the rest of that ninety thousand.
Yeah, you know, we're basically the airport, we're to glorify gas station, go, go sell, go sell, go sell.
Right, right. So that's, that's our strategy with the airport.
Yeah, the the only other question I'd have, Eric, relative to the airport, I know, you know, the four new hangars got built out there. I don't see any dollars here to worry about taxiway. Have you heard anything from the airport advisory board on their game plan to be able to go support that and? Support the the new owner being able to do specific, what I call the, what's taken to their hangar?
Yeah, the, so the artery versus the vein discussion. I did see Isabel briefly. Relative to another topic and then we did talk briefly about this. I know she's on board with that concept. But we really do need to reconvene, not only the airport advisory board, but some of the other boards, I mean.
Yep.
We're just, you know, we're not going to be able to wait, I know I talked with Kirsten on the parks board. Last week and said, hey, you know, we're not going to just have to, you know, we're going to have to meet, use Zoom and. So we'll, we'll definitely work that.
Okay.
And because we did not put dollars in there. The intention was to have the hangar, people building the hangars to, you know, pay that. Off off the main artery. You know, pay, pay up to their their spot.
Yep.
And we want to make sure that when people are asking about building that they understand that's the expectation.
Yep.
Okay. Any, any other questions on the airport? Okay, I didn't know. All right, so next is our tourism. The. Projection on our tourism really from a revenue perspective, we went ahead and Chris and I talked a lot about this and and took it down to four twenty five. We do think we're going to be closer to. You know, the upper fives, five seven five to five nine five this year. But we we do know that those revenues are certainly at risk this next year. The. So we only proposed four hundred and twenty five thousand in expenses as well. The good thing, when we look at tourism, the really good thing is when we go to this next slide. And we see where our our balance is on our checking account.
Yep.
And so I I think as things open. Back up, it's going to give us and we get our hotel occupancy tax committee formed. This is really going to give us the opportunity to sit down and workshop about how do we use some of these dollars? To drive visibility back to Alpine. And in timing is important, right, we don't want to just flag people in here if there's active virus out there. But we also want to have the plan in place so that as tourism is is feeling. Or is is people are feeling comfortable again traveling, how do we help them choose Alpine? And so part of what Chris and I have also been talking about is kind of this two pronged approach where. You have a level of advertising around the short term rental business. Because folks that are looking for that place that they go and they're somewhat contained, right, it's got a little kitchen or a kitchenette. That that's a type of traveler, but then you also want to also advertise the type of traveler. That goes into the hotels and had a good conversation with Peresh. He runs Holiday Express, his wife runs Hampton Inn, and so I know he's wanting to help facilitate. That level of conversation as well, so. My long winded way of saying, you know, our checking account is healthy, it's going to give us an opportunity to really charge after. Tourism when when the city feels comfortable with doing that. Any questions on? All right, and then our last fund is our gas department. And. We did talk a little bit earlier. This meeting about that jump in the expenses tied mostly, you know, to our rectifier. As well as some of the the safety equipment that Randy needs for his team. And when we look at how that rolls into a proposed expenditure of two point two million, while also maintaining. That two hundred and seventy five thousand within that two point two million. For the equity transfer back that will primarily be driving our paving this year. So. How how do we solve that difference of the eighty eight thousand? Five hundred and fifty seven dollar gap, well, if we look at. Really our unrestricted funds. So we were projecting at the end of the year to roughly have close to seven hundred thousand or six hundred and eighty nine thousand. And so that would take that that amount down to about six hundred thousand. That's how we would would solve for what we want to accomplish on the gas department this year. We've not really looked at any sort of rate increases with gas, we're, we, you know, we did extend our buying with West Texas gas. Through the the next year. So June to June, the. The challenge that I've been having, I know Randy and Scott have been having, is that we've reached out to other folks to see if they want to provide us gas. And extend off of that. Tap location with E T P over to our city gate, we haven't found any takers on that. So generally speaking. That is where we're at in in those discussions, I have reached back out to E T P to see if they could provide us some help. They didn't have any solutions for me.
Well, until gas prices get back to the point where they they're doing any more than giving it away at the production costs. You're not going to see that because, you know, the capital game plan just does all the, I'm looking at these little kind of investments, so that'll all change when. Fuel prices start going back up if they do in our lifetime.
Right, right.
Yeah, because.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, fuel as a whole, let's let's face it, you know, across all all forms of fuel, the the some of the consumption's gone down. So, yeah, there's definitely increased supply.
Yeah, until until you get, you know, fuel, oil and. Eighty bucks a gallon, right, or eighty bucks a barrel, it's just not going to be all that productive for them, so. Then everyone will scream because gas prices go up, but that's right now, we we get the benefit from natural gas.
So that, you know, across the summary slides, that it's what I have, certainly want to answer any questions.
So so probably the the only other questions that I have, Eric, is from a budget standpoint, it looks good to me, I mean, you've you've answered the big questions I want. As I normally do through all the grimy details, the stuff you sent out. If if I think now about back to big picture, you know, we're talking about a. You're fully fourteen point seven, fourteen point eight million dollar budget. Against, from an expenditure standpoint, so ended with a deficit of about one point one million dollars. That's kind of the big picture, we're covering that through balanced fund and reserve. When you kind of play all of it out, what do we end up with if this budget were to go through? And you're projecting year end that we spent what we projected. What would you see in terms of, and Megan may be the one who can answer this, what's, how much reserve do we have? And what will we expect the fund balance to be at the end of twenty twenty one?
Right. So let's slide, go back to this particular slide. Are, so so if we spent like we like we projected and we look at our general fund. Where we would transfer the dollars in. Plus spend, I mean, that the general fund. Could certainly end up in a net position and closer to the two fifty to three hundred K range.
Okay.
Okay. So really, you know, your your bigger driver in closing that gap is that five seventy two, one fifty number.
Yep, yep, yep.
The the water wastewater. You know, until we really. Get that infrastructure plan. In place with some of the bigger dollar spend on the collection infrastructure, I don't think we're going to. See any difference there, I mean, if if all of a sudden water sales. Dropped off fifteen, twenty percent, we would definitely close the gap in our budget with our. Combination of two things, I mean, we skinny down on on some of our expenses. But then, you know, we've also got a healthy checking account, but I do, I do believe at the end of the year, we should be around two point three to two point four million. On the airport. If if we don't drive up the fuel sales, that's going to push this airport dollar down to about ten K.
Yep.
Okay. And then hotel occupancy tax, you know, I say we only get three hundred thousand in revenue. I still think we go after our expenses because that really only is going to lower this number down to. down to, you know, maybe the nine, 25 to nine, 50 range.
Yeah.
And then gas, at the end of the year, we would, we would end up at about 600K.
Okay.
If all went as planned.
So, so, so kind of a top level, other than the general fund coming down, you know, 150 to 200K, most everything else balances out. So we're still from a, from a unrestricted fund balance in a pretty healthy position.
Right, right.
That's very helpful.
Yeah, and, and truthfully, you know, we're, we're doing that withholding our tax rate the same.
Yep.
And that's, that's a good thing for the citizens and getting a lot done.
Yeah, no fooling. Well, you know, the infrastructure improvements you're working on and you got the reserve as you think about water wastewater, because that's going to be the, in my mind, the biggest risk going forward is what's underground, you get in the wells and all that stuff taken care of, it's the underground stuff you worry about. And at the most inopportune time, we start blowing lines. So you're eventually going to have to start replacing them.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Eric?
Yes, sir.
Just, just to recap on my end, sorry for coming on late. We had, I had a password problem issue. We're really working it out. Gio came in, he within two seconds, he figured it out.
Oh, great.
Anyway. It's, it appears that for, and this is basically recapping what Congressman Seba said, we have a certain amount of money that we're projecting revenue coming in, money coming in. And of course, our expenses are going to be a little hefty here, money going out. But as far as I understand, from what I've been able to listen to up to date, we do have monies in reserve to take care of this year's expenses. And, and we should actually be in pretty good standing as we enter the next following year. Am I correct in saying that?
Yes, sir.
Don't call me sir.
Yes, Ramon.
There we go.
Yeah, my dad ingrained that too much in me.
And that's basically it.
Okay.
Like, yes, it's a good, it's a good guess, but I'm, I'm happy with it, so.
Yeah, and you know, I think overall, Ramon, the, the folks in the community have been really happy with a lot of the, the street work that's being done. It's visible, they see it. And, and that's an important, important piece to this. Any other questions?
That's
Great, it's great.
Good.
Good. We'll, Megan and I will work back with Cynthia on pulling together, kind of the, you know, Megan and I pull together kind of that final budget view for you to, to look at, we'll send that to you. Make sure we're comfortable and then work back with Cynthia and Rod on all the postings and approval meetings and get that sequenced out. Try to keep it on council meeting dates, that's always our goal, so that your schedules can flow as, as projected with the first Tuesday and third Tuesdays of each month. If we do have to slip something in from an approval perspective, we'll, we'll know that by the August 4th meeting. And if we had to have some sort of, what I mean slip in, if we had to have some special meeting, we would discuss that on August 4th, okay?
Okay.
Awesome. Well, Mayor, that's all I have for the workshop.
Hey, looks pretty good. And I think our residents will be happy, no check increase, which is always good, and the street improvements, which is going on out there. And I've been driving around and the streets are looking fantastic.
So I, I do have a question while we're all on, because it's the schedule that we'll work through, so we're in July. We're all breathing fairly comfortably about the dollars. So what goes on between now and implementation? Because eventually, I know Cynthia and Megan are going to work furiously on getting tax items out there and we got hearings and also have to go on in the August, September timeframe. When will we be ready to kind of walk through with that, Eric, so that we can plan? Because we normally get into this, you know, once a week meeting to be able to get all of our stuff done so we can implement on one October.
Yeah, so I think I, I really want to sit back down with, with Cynthia and Megan and Rod and just make sure we have all of the approval, because we're not raising the tax rate, you know, that, every little bit you do could require some sort of public hearing, but I want to get all that queued up so we know by August 4th. I do think that with the August 18th meeting, we're definitely going to have some type of first reading or some type of requested approval. Then we do have September 1st as a, the meeting 14 days after that. And I, I'd like to think we could get everything accomplished by September 1st. And then that gives Megan's team ample time to get everything in. If we were needing some type of special meeting, I would be thinking between August 18th and September 1st would be when we would try to, to push to have that.
Good, thanks.
Okay, any more questions?
Right? Well, Mayor, we're going to continue to use this for the council meeting that starts at 5:30, so we can, you know, do, do similar to last meeting where you call a break and, or council mandates to break for till 5:30.
Okay. Richard?
So I propose that we adjourn for right now until, and reconvene at 5:30 for our normal city council meeting.
Okay, it's our second?
Our second.
Okay, most of the main second, not debatable, so we'll adjourn the meeting and see y'all at 5:30. Thank you all very much.
Thanks so much.
Given that the city of Alpine, Texas will hold a regular meeting at 5:30 PM on Tuesday, July 21st, 2020 via Zoom conference in the city, in the city of Alpine, Texas. Meeting login details will be found at www.cityofalpine.com for the purpose of considering this agenda. This notice is posted pursuant to the Texas Open Meeting Act, Section 551.043, Texas Government Code. Members of the audience will be provided an opportunity to address the items after the determination of a court, determination of form and proof of notice of the meeting. Zoom meeting, comment, and questions, rules, and procedures are listed on the city website. Remarks will be limited to three minutes per person. Please email your name to meganantrumdirector.finance@ci.alpinetx.us. If you have a petition or other information pertaining to your subject, please email it to the city secretary beforehand. All names wanting to make public comments immediately queued upon and given to the mayor at the section of the meeting. The mayor will call on those individuals one at a time and a meeting moderator will take you off mute to make your comments. This will function the same as our existing sign-up sheet at city council chambers. Please note, you must include your full name, first, last, along with what board you reside in or have interest in. If you do not live or have property in the city of Alpine, take that in your email. General, state law generally prohibits the council from discussing or taking any action on any issue not included on the agenda, but if appropriate, the council may schedule the topic for future discussion or refer the matter to staff. No personal attacks on council members or city staff will be allowed. The mayor and/or city council members may call a point to order to stop the personal attacks. If an individual continues to personally attack an elected official or staff member in the meeting, they may be barred and not called this meeting. Do we have a chaplain? Hello?
No, sir, we don't.
We
You're breaking up, Mayor. No, sir, we do not, we do not have a chaplain for this meeting.
Okay, I'm having a lot of trouble with my internet, it's, it's unstable right now. So Rick, you might have to intercede a couple of, in, in a couple of time instances, okay?
No worries, I'll cover if you can't get you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, so we'll stand up and we'll have the pledge of allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Thank you. City Secretary, do we have a quorum?
Mayor, we do have a quorum and the notice was posted at 1:00 PM on July 17th, 2020.
Okay, do we have any public comments?
Mayor, we have not, we did not receive any email public comments ahead of time.
Okay, and we don't have any presentations or recognition at this time. We'll move on to the reports, city mayor's report. Mine's going to be rather a little lengthy, but I think it's important. I've been getting a lot of calls and I know that the rest of you have, and I know Eric, you've been bombarded with what the governor actually had posted. So I'm going to read it verbatim as it's posted by the governor, so everyone knows exactly what he meant. And we'll start with executive order GA 28 relating to the targeted response to the COVID-19 disaster as part of the reopening of Texas. And county judges and mayors, as appropriate, can prohibit certain outdoor gatherings of over 100 by withholding approval gatherings or can approve such gatherings with conditions or restrictions not consistent with GA 28. The order includes the following. In addition to other mandates, the full order can be found here. All bars and similar establishments that receive more than 51% of their grocery receipts for the sale of alcohol beverages are required to close at 12 noon PM today, and this was dated back a couple of weeks ago, June the 26th, to be precise. Okay? These businesses may be open for delivery or takeout, including for alcohol beverages as authorized by the Texas Alcohol Beverage Commission. Under the direction of Governor Abbott, with the advice of Lieutenant Governor, Speaker of the House, Attorney General, and Texas Comptroller, the governor struck forth to open Texas with, well, safely and strategically restart and revitalize all aspects of the Lone Star State, work, school, entertainment, and culture, business resources, this SHS printable sign, best health practice to avoid COVID-19, the HSS printable sign, how to wash your hands, OSHA guidance to, on returning to And can you mute? Can, can you mute everybody else? Megan? Okay, SBA Economic Injury Disaster Loan Program, strike forth to open Texas arts, culture, and entertainment working groups. Brendan Anthony, working group leader, director of Texas Music Office in the Office of Governor, previously a touring and recording musician, producer, artist, consultant, head of commerce and artist relations. And that's, that pretty much covers or a little bit more. Restaurants may remain open for dine-in service, but at a capacity not to exceed 50% of total listed indoor occupancy. Rafting and tubing business, businesses must close. Outdoor gatherings of 100 or more must be approved by local government with certain exception. As I said from the start, if the positivity rate rose above 10%, the state of Texas would take further action to mitigate the spread of COVID-19, said Governor Abbott. It is clear that the congregating in bars, the action in this executive order are essential to our mission to swiftly contain this virus and take public health. We want this to be as limited in a duration as possible. However, we can only slow the spread if everyone in Texas does their part. Every Texas, Texan has a responsibility to themselves and their loved ones to wear a mask, wash their hands, stay six foot apart from others in public, and stay home if they can. I know that our collective action can lead to a reduction in the spread of COVID-19 because we have done it before and we'll do it again. And that is GA 28. And then on July 2nd, GA 29 came out. On July 2nd, Governor Abbott issued executive order GA 29 requiring all Texans to wear a face covering over the nose and mouth in public spaces with exceptions in counties with 20 or more positive COVID cases, COVID-19 cases. The governor also issued a proclamation given mayors and county judges the ability to impose restrictions on, on outdoor gatherings of over 10. That pretty much summarizes, folks. This order came from the governor himself and as a city council, we supported that action. So it's something that we need to adhere to until we can slow the, the progress of this COVID. So that's my report and I'll turn it over to the city attorney.
Mayor and council, I have an update on GA 29. GA 29 is the executive order that the mayor just spoke about regarding requiring masks. There you go. You can go to the next page, please, Gio. Next page, please, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. So it's, as, as you go through this, you'll see that the governor's orders have been sometimes at cross purposes with other parts of his order and it makes it difficult to understand exactly what the mask orders are and what the penalty is if you don't comply with it. But the, even though the disaster act that the governor put out allowed criminal penalties for violations of orders, the GA 29 regarding the face mask says that you can only have a fine, you can't have me punished by any kind of prison. Go on to the next one, please, next slide. Next slide, please, Gio. Then the, GA 29 then goes on to state that you can't detain or arrest anybody for violating you. So in other words, the governor has the order that, that trumps what we can do locally, but then he says you can't, a police officer can't detain or arrest somebody for this. And so the statewide district and county penalties association says, we don't know how we're supposed to enforce this because you can't, if you can't detain somebody or arrest them, how do you enforce it? And, and remember that detaining somebody is the, what you do when you give somebody a ticket. It's not arresting them, but you stop them and you talk to them and you give them a ticket. Next slide, please. So the fact that you can't detain or arrest somebody, the next slide, please, Gio, that it's a, you can't really enforce it because you can't give somebody a ticket for violating you. So a lot of agencies are saying they don't really want to enforce it because it's, it's confusing and you don't want to have a criminal law that's not clear. You want to make sure you know the people that it's enforced against have a clear idea of what there are and can't do. And for the law force, which you want to know what, what the law is that you're trying to enforce. So what you're left with is, is, next slide, please, Gio. The next slide talks about how the GA 29, the governor's mask order, still allows officers to enforce trespass laws and they can remove mask violators at the request of a business establishment. So the, the GA 28 did allow local jurisdictions to oppose their own civil and criminal penalties for not wearing a mask, but it's still sort of up in the air because is that going to violate what GA But it's still sort of up in the air because is that gonna violate what GA 29 says? And GA 29 says that you're not supposed to do that. And there's been some other governor's orders that say that the governor's orders take precedence over what local jurisdictions do. So the GA 29 does make clear, no law enforcement or other official may detain, arrest, or confine in jail any person for a violation of this order. So it doesn't say anything about whether you can do that for enforcing a local mask order. So anyway, some, some big cities where you have more than 20 positive COVID cases are enforcing local mask orders. But the jury's still out on what, what that's really gonna mean and whether there's any teeth in it where somebody can really be convicted of it. So the next one on the mask ordinance conclusion is that the only real enforceable mask requirements we could make would be county and municipal orders where you could actually stop, detain somebody and give them a warning or a fine. But I think our hands are tied because on that, because we don't have more than 20 positive cases in most counties. So it's a model and the best thing we could do is to continue to provide leadership to the community and let everyone know that we all know that if we wear masks, if two people to a conversation wear masks, the odds of catching COVID dropped to less than 1%. So if we want to stop COVID spread, everybody should wear a mask. And that's just the practical truth of the COVID pandemic. The next thing I wanted to talk about for the council as y'all go through the budget season is the property tax rates under COVID. And once again, we have a little bit of confusion between the governor and the state law. Remember that last year, the Texas Legislature hammered the local ability to raise taxes and said that rollback rate was, they dropped to three and a half percent. So if the tax rate went up more than three and a half percent, the voters could not just ask for it. Now there's gonna be an automatic rollback election to see whether or not the voters want to approve more than a three and a half percent tax increase. But the House bill itself said that if there's a state of disaster, eight percent is reinstated as the rollback rate. So that's the law, that's the law that was passed by the legislature and signed by the governor last year, SB 2. So the governor, of course, next slide, please, doesn't like tax increases. I don't think we in Alpine like them either. So I'm just talking about the law. So the governor on May 18th said that verbally, he doesn't think cities can rely on his disaster declaration to raise taxes over three and a half percent. But the, and he urged local governments not to increase tax, property taxes. But the Texas municipal league and a lot of big cities believe that there is an emergency. We all know there is an emergency going on. And so the, the next slide, please. That, so that if, if the city wanted to raise taxes more than three and a half percent, I don't believe there would be an automatic rollback election despite what the governor is stating because the governor's press conferences, press releases can't overrule what the state law is and the state law is SB 2. So anyway, it's one, two in the city's toolbox of how you want to deal with taxes. But the, the best advice is that you can't go up to eight percent. I don't think the city really wants to go up at all, but you just need to know that that's possible. And then finally, the federal government has released some funds through the US Department of Commerce through what we call the CARES Act. Keep going to the next slide. And the CARES Act provides that the cities can apply for funding for infrastructure improvements that will mitigate the impacts of COVID and will increase jobs and employment. And the US Economic Development Administration from the Department of Commerce through these grants, oversee these grants, and they're open for application now. The grants can be up to 30 million per project. And they're supposed to focus on infrastructure improvement that would maybe bring about some economic diversification efforts, tourism marketing. Of course, it's likely to be high demand, but the government's released close to billion dollars for this particular part of the CARES Act. The city of Presidio is taking, next slide, please, the city of Presidio is taking use of it to include a convention center project as part of a hotel project. And the city of Pecos, Reeves County is using a regional water project that they're applying through funds from it. So people in West Texas are aware of it and seeking it. So it could be something the city could think about because as some people have said, you never want to let a good disaster go to waste. If they're gonna, if the government's gonna give away some money, why shouldn't Alpine get some? So those are some things the council can think about as you go through the budget season. And if anybody has any questions, we'd be happy to answer them. Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Thank you, Rod.
Thank you.
Okay, then any questions for Rod? Then we'll go ahead and move to the city manager report.
All right, Honorable Mayor, city council, we've got Acta with us tonight. She hasn't been able to attend the last couple, but once Gio pulls the slide up and he unmutes, Acta will jump right into her first slide, okay, Gio? Now we can go, go all the way to slide three, Gio. And then Acta. Did you send her the, the note to unmute? Okay, perfect, there she is.
Okay, can everybody hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Okay, so just like we've gone before, we will start with a bigger picture of what's going on through the state and then dial down, down to our county. Across the state, as you can see, from about the middle of June, looking at the bar graph in red, the number of cases in Texas of COVID have been increasing. We actually reached a really unfortunate mark yesterday or two days ago that we hit over 15,000 new cases across the state in just one day. That is not, that is not something that we were striving for by any means. And we really need to turn that number of cases down and see a downhill slope on this curve. So that exponential rise that we are seeing is really worrisome. And obviously, everyone has seen all the news reports of hospitals running out of beds and a lot of patient care being compromised because of the volume of cases. And that's a concern to us in our area because of our lack of healthcare resources as well. So really worrisome graph there. And as expected, in our lower right-hand corner, we have the gray graph with the black line. And that talks about the number of deaths related to COVID in, in a day across the state. And as expected, that has also started to increase. There's always a delay between when we see new cases come up across the state and then when people begin to increase in the number of deaths related to COVID. When someone is diagnosed with COVID through a swab, it then takes some time for their health to deteriorate, end up in the hospital, maybe the ICU, and then finally die from COVID. And so there's always a delay of at least a couple of weeks between when someone was found to be positive and then when they die from COVID. And so there's always a delay in the gray graph compared to the red graph. So as expected, we're starting to see an increase in the number of deaths across the state as well, which is very worrisome. And so with increasing kind of the, the measures that we can take as individuals, as well as the mask mandates and things like that, that Governor Abbott has put into place, hopefully we'll start to see a shift in these curves and we can kind of even out and even start going down in the number of cases we're seeing as a state. We can go to the next slide. So this is a breakdown of where we are from the country to the state and then to us as a county. So as you can see, I've bolded the columns that, that we really need to pay attention to. So let's look at the cases per 1,000 people. So in the US as a whole, we have about 11 cases per every 1,000 people. That comes out to about one person for every 100 people, which is actually pretty worrisome. Texas sits right around where we are as a country, also at 11 cases per 1,000 people. For a long time, we were less than half of what the country was seeing. And so it's really worrisome that we've gotten up to where the rest of the US is. The tri-county area, so our Big Bend region of Presidio, Jeff Davis, and Brewster County together, we're at again 11 cases per 1,000. And if you actually extrapolate down to Brewster County, the vast majority of those cases are actually in our county. So our county's case rate is actually significantly higher. We have 18 cases per 1,000 people or about two, almost two people per every thousand are, have been infected with COVID, which is pretty worrisome. Just because we know that there's a percent of those folks that end up hospitalized and then a percent of those that do end up dying from COVID. So having that high number of cases per 1,000 is pretty worrisome with our, again, with our limited healthcare resources. Looking at testing, the US is testing at about 100, whoop, go back one more time, Gio, sorry. Going back to testing, so the US is testing at about 140 tests per 1,000 people. Texas is, is a little worse than that, we're doing about 105 tests per 1,000. It actually makes us the 13th worst test, like rate of tests out of the 50 states. So it, last time, I think we were the 11th and we've gone up to the 13th. So that's a little bit of an improvement, but you know, we'd like to be a lot higher than, than that. Tri-county, we have 150 tests that we're doing per 1,000 people, so that's pretty significant. We're above average for the US and we'd like to remain there. So trying to continue to get mobile testing and mass testing through our area does help. I don't have a breakdown of how many tests we're doing per 1,000 people in Brewster County just because when we have any mobile testing that comes through our area, we have folks that live in one county and then go to another county to get tested. Same with even just day-to-day clinics and hospitals and things like that. So I don't have a breakdown of how many people or which people went to which mobile testing site. And so I don't really know out of all the tests we do in our area, how many of those are Brewster County residents? How many are Presidio, Jeff Davis, et cetera? So I just can tell you how many people got tested at our local sites, like what the end days total was. So we don't have a better breakdown of that, unfortunately. And then at the bottom, we just looking at the 169 cases that Brewster County has, I actually have an update today. We're down to, instead of 15 active cases, which is in parentheses, we actually have eight active cases. We have a few more recovered. And we still have our, our two deaths unfortunately from COVID in our area. And although it may not seem like a lot in the grand scheme of things, especially with a number of Texans that are dying every day from COVID, two deaths in our county actually puts us at double the rate of deaths for the state. If you actually take how many people are dying from COVID across the state, it's actually, and you know, dial it down to how many people live in our county. We should have, if we were on average, we would be one, only one death for how many people we have in our county. So we're actually double the death rate, which is again, not where we would like to be. So, okay, let's go to the next slide. Yep.
Before you move this to Brewster County, can that be divided between the county and the city as to how many cases per, per area?
No, we just get notified on, you know, that Brewster County has a positive. And unfortunately, some of these individuals have PO boxes, for example, in Alpine. So they may own land, you know, outside of Alpine, but then come in for their mail. So I don't have a good way to know where their physical property is. A lot of our positives have PO boxes, which, you know, which is common for a lot of folks, even in Alpine itself.
Okay, that's fine, thank you.
Yeah. So with our, with our number of cases that we've been seeing, this is a really good, the New York Times has a really good breakdown of what Brewster County has been doing week by week. So weeks that we have cases going down, we have a yellow bar for that week. Cases that are going up compared to the week before, it's more orange or more red. So you can see that for a long time, we didn't have any cases and we kind of had that start of our outbreak around town. So we went up to an orange bar that week because we had a jump up, a significant jump up in our cases. Then we had two weeks of red where we started diagnosing a lot of positives in our area. Then we kind of got over that outbreak and we went down to kind of that lighter orange. And then we've kind of swung up just a little bit since then. So that's another really good way to kind of week by week, see where we're at. What we want to see is more of those yellow bars. You know, we want every week to have fewer cases than the week before. And we're not there yet, we definitely don't want to be in a red area ever again. But definitely want to see fewer and fewer cases as weeks go by. So it's another good visual way to see how we're doing over, over a period of time. We can go to the next slide. So this one, it breaks down the ages of those individuals that have tested positive. There are some changes from before, so you can see we have an individual that is zero to nine years old that tested positive. We also have 13 individuals that are teenagers or 10 to 19 at least. And all the way into our, you know, adult working years. That's likely how most of them contracted it through work and kind of going out and about town. And then the, there are seven unknowns for ages. Just, those are the ones that the health department has reported to me. And I don't have any information on them other than they're Brewster County residents. So I don't have a date of birth or anything, anything to kind of extrapolate their ages to put it in that graph. So they're, they're seven unknowns. And once I get that data, even if this is after they've recovered, I'll still add it to the, the correct bars so that we have better data. But, so there are seven unknowns that I'm still trying to piece together some information from the health department. So that's where we are. Again, the most of our positives over the last week or so have been in individuals that are 50 and above and definitely 60 and above. And so that's really concerning. This is the age where folks are the most vulnerable for becoming hospitalized due to COVID or having complications, including death from COVID. And so the fact that we're seeing our vulnerable populations continue to, to be COVID positive is really concerning. And so again, with an area that's strapped for healthcare resources, that's, that's not a pattern that we want to see. So we still need to continue doing our part to take care of, to take, take care of each other. And then on the far right graph, you can see that, that's our dashboard. You can see that we had our big outbreak, those, that big blue hump of active cases that we are monitoring. And we got well over 100 cases then. As those individuals began to recover, you can see that two did die from COVID. Those are the little black marks on the, on the negative side, on the bottom of the orange bars. And then once we got over our outbreak, we have stayed kind of in the teens. And again, today we're down to eight active cases that we continue to monitor. We have not gone down to zero. We still see a trickle of COVID positive people popping up in our community, one here, one there. And so at any given point in time, we have somewhere between, I'd say eight and 16 people positive at any given point in time. And as folks recover or considered recovered, we have, you know, a few more that, that come into that, that count. So that's, that's been the pattern that we're seeing, yep.
One quick question, so when we think about total hospitalizations across, you know, say the 169, 170 in Brewster County, are we able to quantify that, like we said, you know, hey, five people had to be hospitalized or 10? Just, I'm just curious.
Yeah, in terms of total hospitalizations, not just, you know, that happened to be in the hospital today type of a thing.
Correct, yeah, because that slide will talk about how many are in the hospital today. But I'm just wondering, you know, out of the 170, how many result in hospitalizations?
Yeah, and that. Yeah, and that does end up bringing up other questions just because I, and I do have that, the health department, and I do talk about how many have been hospitalized in in general. The other thing, though, to also consider is that the hospital takes care of more than just Brewster County. So even though Brewster County's numbers may be, you know, the number of hospitalizations may be, you know, one way, the total number of hospitalizations may be vastly different just because we take care of folks from Ohinaga all the way to, you know, Presidio County, Jeff Davis. There's, there's a big capture catchment of people that the hospital takes care of. I have, let me see. So from the last report that DSHS went over with me, there were 14 total individuals that I know of, that they know of, from Brewster County that were hospitalized. And that doesn't include, you know, how many were hospitalized in Jeff Davis or Presidio County or all of those that ended up at our hospital. I just, that's how many Brewster County residents were hospitalized. And some of these hospitalizations may have also occurred somewhere else. If they were out of town or they were visiting family and they ended up hospitalized somewhere or or they got transferred from our hospital to another hospital. But that's how many people in our county tested positive that they know of and that I know of that at some point required hospitalization, whether it was here or somewhere else. So almost 10% of our cases. Yep. Let's see. So I think that's it for any other questions on this slide.
No.
Okay. We can go to the last one. Okay, and then this last slide, it talks about our our dashboard. So Brewster County has been trying to put up a daily dashboard to kind of give a breakdown. And our dashboard is a little confusing and a little different than what other counties can potentially put out just because, again, a lot of our our towns are so close to each other and there's a lot of crossing over. Some folks live in one county, work in another, things like that. So it's hard to really dial down on county level data for things like the number of individuals tested. But we're trying to break down what we know is tri-county data versus Brewster County data. So it is a little confusing and a little different, but that's just geographically how our numbers work out. So for Brewster County, we have 171 positive individuals. Of those, 153 have recovered. And we actually have eight additional ones recovered. So we're actually up to 161 recovered and then with two deaths. So that leaves eight active individuals that we are currently monitoring. It looks like we have four hospitalizations currently per BBRMC. And we have quite a few pending test results. As you can see, there's on the side, 153 tests were conducted at the mobile testing site in Alpine. And then there are a couple more pending still from from Marfa. So Marfa had, again, mobile testing on Sunday and Monday. So they tested 86 individuals on Sunday and 95 individuals on Monday. That's the, that's the report that I got. So that number of of tests that we've done, but we don't have results yet. That number is going to increase a little bit more, that gap, just because we're going to have another 180 or so tests that are that are pending on top of what's there already. So, and then at the very bottom, Brewster County. So our cases per 1,000 people, kind of linking back to a couple slides before, we're at about 18.5 cases of COVID per 1,000 people. Texas has been slowly getting closer and closer to where we are, which, again, having been through that, we don't, we don't want Texas to be there as a state, but they're now at 11.7 cases per 1,000 people. And, you know, two weeks ago, we were in single digits. We were at about seven cases per 1,000 people. We've slowly been creeping up to 11.7. So that's definitely concerning that they're getting close to where we are as an average for 1,000 people. So. But that's all I have. What questions does everybody have?
Any questions?
No.
I guess not then. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you so much for attending tonight.
He's waving his hand. Does he have a question? He's muted, though.
Who is?
Ramon, yeah, he's, I think he's muted.
Gio, can you unmute Ramon?
Will also give us an idea of of those that are positive, testing positive that may require hospitalization, especially in the year, in the range of 20 to 50, from what I understand. Do you foresee in the the continuation of testing and to what degree in the near future will occur within the tri-county vicinity?
It's, I think it's going to be really hard to predict what the curve looks like. It's going to, what the state executive orders are, are going to make a big difference. You know, we don't have a lot of jurisdiction really on a local level. So the state's really going to be dictating what we can do or not do in terms of mitigating the spread of COVID. But all, I think all of those measures do add up to hoping to keep that curve as low as possible. Governor Abbott has talked about, you know, shelter in place being a last resort in the future. And and we don't want to go back to that. We, we, you know, we saw what that was doing to local businesses and things like that. But but it's hard to also watch what's happening across the state and know what we went through in our county just a couple of weeks ago and and know that that is a possibility of happening again. So regardless of what the, you know, what the orders are, the more we take individual responsibility of, you know, minimizing social contacts with other people and wearing your mask and things like that, I think that can keep our numbers as low as possible. But I have no way of predicting what's going to happen in the future.
But do you have an idea if there's going to be more testing conducted in the tri-county area?
Oh, um. Yeah, I do think that that's the goal. I know there's been a lot of conversations happening to see if that's something we can do. There's been more requests sent to do, to have, you know, another mobile testing site come through Brewster County at least, since that's, you know, that's our jurisdiction. So we've requested already another site for Marathon or Terlingla or somewhere in Brewster County so we can keep that option open. But as the number of cases rise across the state, that demand for mobile testing is increasing also. So we're trying our best, but that we may end up not, you know, because we're not a hotspot anymore, luckily, we may not necessarily be a priority place to to get mobile testing pretty consistently anymore. So we'll have to, there's nothing to do other than to keep requesting it and see what happens.
Yeah, so Councilor, we've also reached out to to Rick Flores at the hospital. And I know he's working back with Stephanie Elmore to gather tests. If we could do, you know, some level of testing locally at the hospital, too. I know TDM is is willing to send the tests our way as long as we have a way, you know, through the hospital to administrate them. So ideally, we could get some being set up every week would be the goal.
That's very good to know. One thing I've noticed that on Facebook, social media, there seems, when people find out that there is testing occurring, they keep asking, when is the next time that we're going to have some more? So the more testing we can do, the better.
Agreed. Great, thank you. Any other questions for Acta?
Oh, by the way, the president now saying it's unpatriotic not to wear the mask. On the internet, so now it's finally coming from above.
Gio, slide eight. Yeah, so this next slide, well, first of all, I had to give tribute to our favorite local Alpine band, The Swifts. I'm sure Maria Curry is partial, as is Chris. I I couldn't help but put that look up there. And part of, you know, their band is getting ready for Viva Big Bend, which is going to be all virtual this year. And there's a lot of back and forth and conversation with Stuart Ramsor. You know, how do you maintain a safe environment? I think Chris Ruggia did some great work back in May. If you remember when he had that live streaming audio broadcast through Facebook, and it really did, did a wonderful job to help set the tone. And I know other places are doing lots of online stuff across the country, too. So Viva Big Bend will be a virtual program this year. Relative to, you know, how we're handling things in our city facilities and different venues that we have, we've not really changed or pivoted off of our discussion from July 7. You know, we've tried some things with recreation programs this year. Unfortunately, with the the spike in coronavirus cases locally, it just didn't make sense to continue to to provide those. And, you know, we really worked hard to try to have that organized, but certainly health and safety is our number one priority. And then Council, I had shared Bob Cremenaker's note with all of you relative to what he's contemplating down at Big Bend National Park. We certainly know that's a huge draw to the area. When they closed this previous time, they were actually in route. So a certain level of, you know, disappointment there. So go ahead to the next slide for us. Gio. The other piece that our team's been working on, Chris Ruggia, Heather Yaden, Cynthia Solis, and myself have been working on two pieces. We've gotten some feedback, certainly from Acta Escobar as well. But they are what we call a restaurant safety pledge. And then also we're modeling HVAC as a as a pledge as well. It's going to sit out the same way. And generally, it's taking, what are these best practices that are coming out in combination with our medical professionals? You know, how do you best run restaurants? How do you best make sure you're you're managing your HVAC systems? We've got a workshop with restaurant owners tomorrow. We're going to review these pledges that we've put together. And the idea is that this could be a document that the restaurants would sign off on. They would sign weekly, post on their window. And then when people are looking to say, hey, who really has stepped up their protocols? And so I feel safer to go in there because we do know health and safety is a concern of many, many of our residents. So we've been working back to try to help put this this program together. And then we'll have a workshop tomorrow open to the public, and we'll do that at 3:00 P.M. You know, alongside that, we've also been working on expanding the outdoor dining experiences and making that welcome. We've got that resolution queued up this evening where Council will really support that so that when we think about our local ordinances, they shape up about how we use sidewalk and rights of way. We certainly will lessen that, you know, enforcement side of it and really work more directly back with the restaurants to help them expand their outdoor seating because we know airflow is better and it's it's a good way to help facilitate the restaurants, specifically the restaurants, and gaining more business. And so we've been real pleased with the feedback that we're getting from several of the the owners here in town. We've also looked at some of the old seating stuff that we had from the shoot days. Believe it or not, we still have some of those tables. And we're going to make those pieces of equipment, those that are in, still in good shape, available to restaurants at no charge so that if it makes sense for them to expand their outdoor dining, they'll at least have that as as an asset. And certainly, some sometimes cost can be a prohibitor. So we want to try to do things to help help facilitate them being able to expand if if that makes sense for them. Each individual restaurant is different. Give give a lot of credit to Heather for reaching out specifically to all the different restaurants and really making that welcome. She also is trying to keep the hours of operation updated. Do they still have dine-in? Is it only outside dining? Is it takeout only? We're really trying to keep that up to date on the website because we still have a a certain level of traffic that comes through, whether it's tourism, whether it's people coming here to Alpine to work. And we want to make sure we're helping facilitate the best experience possible for them. So really appreciate the work that Cynthia, Chris, and Heather have done. Obviously, the workshop tomorrow is open to anybody. And then the next, any questions on some of what we're doing from from COVID perspective locally? My last slide's not really COVID-related, it's more ordinance-related. So the last slide is just real, really more of an update on the ordinance revisions because, you know, some of the things like the short-term rental. Chris and Lucy and I are going to get together. But, you know, with with some of the changes, some of the slowdowns, we haven't pushed so hard on that particular ordinance. The noise ordinance, I know Counselor Stevens, Chief Martin and myself, you know, with the bars being closed, some of the measuring that we were trying to do on noise levels, we've got to kind of wait for that to occur again. Billy Billane, we we talked about that earlier. Hey, in our workshop, I think we've got a good game plan around that. Shipping containers, P&amp;Z is going to contemplate that again next week. The fire inspection fees will also be something that we'll work through as Phil gets his certification as as a fire marshal. And then lighting ordinance is something that P&amp;Z is starting to work on. And then finally, property maintenance. Thank you, Counselor Escobar. We had a great discussion, her and David and myself, that resulted in some output. We've sent a couple things out to Council as well to think about. Obviously, property maintenance is of top order and top priority here in the community. So I think we're, we're making good progress on that. We're going to, you know, after this evening, based on the outcome from the item relative to parks, that would be something else we would queue up here, but we'll get to that later, later in the agenda. So. My slides are not as fun as Jennifer's. We've got Jennifer Stewart on next to talk about animal control and our pet population here in Alpine. I think Jennifer and her team do a wonderful job. We've got a lot of pet owners, we've got a lot of active groups in in the town. So that being said, I'll hand over to Jennifer.
Hello, can everybody hear me okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Careful. All right, if we could get onto our next slides here. The first one was just kind of an introduction, so that number 13 is fine. This is going to be our second quarterly report. This is going to include April, May, and June. So I made some graphs. Bear with me, this is the first time I've actually made slides like this before. So hopefully, they're easy to read and understand. So this first slide here is just showing intakes of cats and dogs. And you can kind of see there's a steady incline. The cats are in blue, just pretty much kind of staying the same. There's a little incline between the months of April and June for intakes on adoptable cats or stray cats. And then you look at the dog intakes and we, it looks like we have a, I mean, it's not a huge increase, I believe it's by about, you know, 10 or so. But there was a little bit of an increase in dog intakes after our shelter in place or, you know, everybody was staying home. So and then now we've kind of gotten into a little bit, a little decline. But it it really hasn't changed in the last couple of months, staying pretty consistent. If you look to the right of the screen, I broke everything down into wards. You can see our dog population coming in is pretty even around the board in regards to where they're found in the wards. Our cats, on the other hand, are a little bit, a little bit staggered. They're still pretty close. You can see Ward three has a little bit more of an intake. These are all adoptable. These are all adoptable cats. These are not, we're not counting our feral cat population in here. This is just our adoptable cats or owned cats. And most of our cat intakes are from just people trapping. So our dogs are usually just running loose, and our cats are usually from traps. So you want to use that information from that to make for your chart there. So next slide, please. This is, I decided to incorporate the entire six months from this year so you can kind of see, and you can really see our drop in intakes in dogs on this. So you see March, pretty high intakes. And then, and this is just, you know, thinking out loud here, but I think that with everybody's maybe staying home, our dogs were staying home, too. So you can see that March, high numbers. April, people are home, dogs are home. And then it's kind of, it's kind of coming up at an incline as we got into the next couple of months. Cats, like I said, are being trapped, so our numbers are staying around the same. Also, like I said, I broke it down into wards so you can, you can see where animals are coming from. Ward 3 is trapping more, you can see from that, that chart. Next slide. So this chart, I took our numbers from the same quarters for 2018, 2019, and 2020. Also, you can see that we have a huge decline this year in our intakes, which is awesome. I would like to see that number continue to go down. We'll see once people are, everybody's back into work, but we'll see. So that's good news there. Next slide. So surrenders, we have not taken in surrenders since March to keep our shelter numbers low. We are taking them in extreme emergencies, but people have been pretty understanding. We're referring people to other rescues, encouraging them to online network their own pets into homes. We did take in two, and that's over a course of three months. So that's, that's pretty significant, which means that people are, you know, they're taking our advice and they're branching out and they're networking their own pets or they're resolving their issues on their own. So that was good to see. Next slide, please. So one big deal that we had this last month in June, we did have, and we haven't had to do this in quite some time, a very large seizure warrant that we did issue. These are some of our pictures or some of our cats that we did take in. As you can see by the numbers, it was quite a large load of animals. A lot of time and effort and work from the entire staff, volunteers, the courts, all of that helped us get these animals out of their situation. And you can see from my comment on here is that we did quickly, once they were ours, got the birds and the rabbits into a home. 11 of our dogs that we took were put into other rescues. Two of the dogs we decided to not transport to other rescues due to their pregnancies. So we do have puppies up here right now because of the two mommies. We do have most of the cats from the seizure as well, but we're still, we're still working on networking them out of here. So that was, that was some excitement for, for that month of June. Next slide. So adoptions, I just kind of lined them out in these graphs just so you can kind of see, we had a decline in adoptions between April and May. And then we're right back to where we were normally moving them out with adoptions. You know, there wasn't a whole lot of traffic up here. It still isn't a whole lot of traffic up here at the shelter. So most of our animals, you know, are, I mean, they are leaving by adoption, but they, there's a lot of transport going on as well. You can see cats, this last, this quarter was our main, main animals to move out of here. So next slide, please. Let's see, transport. So as you can see, transports, those take up a lot of our time, but we did get to move out 29 animals this last three months. So 23 cats, six dogs. Our network partners that we used for these were Grand Companions in Fort Davis, One Tail at a Time out of Portland, Oregon, and Animal Friendly Alliance out of Fort Collins, Colorado. So that was a big deal for us, especially during pandemic. Able to move animals like that was a lot of help. Alrighty, microchips, still, still doing microchips up here. Got 12 in our animals for the public, four cats, eight dogs. We're still microchipping all of our animals that leave here that are adopted. So we're putting a lot of microchips in animals. Next slide. Animal bites. So I lost my screen here. Hold on just a second.
Well, okay, we got it, Jennifer.
Okay, I can't see my screen at all, though. I'm looking at a black screen. Oh, there we go. Okay. All right, animal bites. So I incorporated last year's quarterly report from last year and our last quarter. So those are around the same lines as the amount of bites that we had this quarter. We did have a good decrease in that. We always want to see decrease in bites. All of our bites this last quarter were provoked incidences, so.
So what's an example of a provoked incident?
So that is, if you, if you read your packet there, it's people that have handled animals, and they shouldn't have, pretty much, put themselves in the situation where they accidentally get bit. So, you know, picking an animal off the road that is injured without protection, going into a property without, you know, without, you know, talking to the owner first, things like that are unprovoked.
Okay.
Okay. Let me go to the next slide there. So citations issued, we did order, issue 40 citations. As you can see, animals at large are a big, are a big hit with that. So, and that's a, that's a common thing. Next slide, please.
On the animals at large, Jennifer, are you seeing more call-ins on that? Or are you finding those out on patrol?
It's, it's a little bit of both. I mean, we do have an officer almost every day out on patrol. Just, they're just on patrol. So it's, it's a little bit of both. The public call-ins are extremely important, though, because, you know, we can't be, one person can't be everywhere in town. So those are always, those at least give us an idea of what areas we need to be going to.
Good, thank you.
And so, let's see, we're on feral cats. So this is not, I mean, you can compare this, this graph to our adoptable cats, of course, but you can see that Ward 4 is also a big ward for trapping as well. Unfortunately, theirs are not as adoptable as our Ward 3 cats, as you can see. So we have noticed that there has been a lot of live trapping lately. TNR is a big deal right now. We have a group called Big Ben Pets that is really active in getting some of these colonies fixed and released back to their area. So, and that is also being assisted by the Humane Society with their funds. This is just our numbers for, for what's...
Hey, Jennifer, I added this slide for you.
Oh, great.
I think that you do a good job at keeping up with the condition of the shelter building and the assets out there. I think that was well represented in the capital improvement plan. And really, you know, the other thing that you have is a strong cadre of volunteers. And so maybe, you know, maybe share with council a little bit more on kind of what they're doing.
Yeah, so we do have our, we have a core volunteer group that does come up every morning and help us clean. We do have several volunteers that are helping with these transports that help with networking these animals. They help with our Pet Finder. Every single person involved in this, in this, you know, movement of animals and networking of animals is super important, or you're so grateful for our volunteers. We couldn't, we couldn't run the shelter without them, honestly. Much.
Great. Thank you. It kind of just accelerated everything there, so thank you.
I do have a couple of other things that I thought of to add. I wanted to make sure that y'all knew that we were, of course, following the mask mandatory up here. We're taking our temps daily here at the animal shelter. Our doors are still locked, but we, we will unlock them for people to come in. We're not allowing anybody to gather in our lobbies. So it's, it's usually just a one person or a family at a time in the facility. And people have been great understanding, and we've been really appreciative of the public, you know, understanding that our doors are locked for a reason, and the mask mandatory is essential for everybody's safety. So I really want to, you know, say that for our community is everybody's been really, made this a lot easier on us following our guidelines. I did also want to mention that we did try and paint our back kennel area. We had a failure with that. So we're in the process of getting our, the kennel floors redone. We have to scrape up all the paint and retry, but we are working on that in regards to the shelter maintenance in the back there. So once that's done, I encourage everybody to come up and take a look. It looks really nice, even though it's kind of scratched up right now. So other than that, if anybody has any questions.
Jennifer, one question. I noticed, I noticed that you had birds and rabbits on the adoption list. What kind of birds and rabbits?
So the rabbits, I'm not sure exactly the breeds of the rabbits. They came from the seizure warrant. The birds were, we had a rooster, two hens, and a duck. So, and those were also from the seizure warrant. We're not really equipped to house animals like that, but we did do the best we can considering it was a mess.
Yes, sir, Rod. Thank you, Jennifer.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Great job. Mayor and Council.
I wanted to give kudos to Jennifer because she did such an excellent job on that very difficult case that she was talking about where she sees dogs, cats, chickens, and ducks. These animals were in the worst possible condition, and it was a terrible situation. And she and her crew handled it very professionally. And I just want to tell y'all, she did an excellent job on that. We brought it to court, and Sandy Stewart and I dealt with it, but it was a difficult situation that she did a good job of.
Thank you so much, Rod. I really appreciate your help with that.
Jennifer, you did a great job in your presentation for being the first. And, you know, that just goes along with what you do on a day-to-day basis. So, you know, all your staff members out there, thank you all very much. Fantastic job.
I appreciate it. I hope that we continue to improve.
Jennifer, you can take the rooster over to Eric's house.
Oh, yeah.
Jennifer does not need a rooster.
That was my top priority animal to get out of here. It was not quiet.
That was a foul.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Mayor and Council.
Yes, sir, great job, great job. Let's move on to city staff. Let's see, public hearings, we have none. Consent agenda minutes, financial reports. Department written reports point to the public. The following items are of routine and administrative nature. The council has been furnished with background support material for each item and/or has been discussed at a previous meeting. All items will be acted upon by one vote without being discussed separately unless requested by a council member. And with each item and separate discussion have been acted upon, the remaining items will be adopted by one vote, city manager.
Honorable Mayor, City Council, this evening's consent agenda, we have two items. First item is approval amendments from City Council meeting on July 7, 2020. And the second is approval of lower goal for the Hotel occupancy tax committee for Ward 4.
Okay. I propose we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Everybody's hand, is everybody up? There we go. Okay, now I see those hands, okay. All those opposed, like sign.
Mayor, I don't think everybody heard the vote. Could you ask for the vote one more time?
Yes, I'm calling for the vote. All those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Okay, I don't see everybody on the screen. Lamont, Maria.
They're all up.
They're all up, okay. Thank you very much. No one's opposed, okay, motion carries, thank you.
Perfect.
Okay, good. Go on to information or discussion items, city manager.
Honorable Mayor and City Council, the first information discussion item we have is our EMS quarterly report with Mr. Mike Scudder. I think Gio will take him off mute. And he submitted information in your packet, and he can go through the highlights that and question and answer with council.
Hello, can you hear me?
I think Gio's got you, got you off mute now.
Okay, can you hear me?
We got you, Mike.
Yes. Okay, bye. Okay, good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council members, City Manager Eric Zimmer. I have the second quarter report for 2020. The total number of runs for the city and the county from 4-1, 2020 to 6-30, 2020 were 124 calls. The breakdown on that, the total number of city calls were 74 transports, 19 no transports. Total county transport calls were 20. Total no transports were 11. On the breakdown for April, the total number were 43. The total number for May were 35, and the total for June were 46. Pretty much the same, the city, the April numbers, we had 26 city transports, six no transports, six counties, five county no transports for May, 18 transports, seven no transports, 10 county transports, no county no transports. And in June, we had 30 transports for the city, six no transports, four for the county, and six no transports. And those numbers for May were pretty low. A lot of this, of course, you know, with everything with the pandemic, a lot of calls normally that we would get, we didn't. And I was looking at last year, we're actually down 22% from what we normally do for the, for the second quarter. One of the things that, for the first quarter, we did about the same, 124 calls. Actually, it was the exact same number, just different makeup on that. But that, that was pretty much normal. So we did see a reduction of calls, and most of it was, you know, what we believe, related to the pandemic. That was like a nationwide trend where people were actually afraid to go to the hospital. They'd stay home and be sick. And then we, you know, you'd see them when they were really sick because they, they were afraid to go out. And it was like a national, national type thing that happened, and it happened here. One of the things that I did want to talk about is a lot of these calls, especially when we had the outbreak here in Alpine, every, every other call we had was COVID-19 related. And it was, you know, it ranged from people that were tested and had minor, minor ailments, but they wanted to go to the hospital to be checked. And I don't know what the outcomes for those were, but I'm sure a lot of those were sent back home for isolation and to monitor. And then, of course... And then, of course, some of them, we had really sick people, and they went to the hospital, and they were, they were transferred out. We, we have had a lot of our, on the air transports that we've done, have been COVID-19 patients. Let me get down to that real quick. On our air transports for the quarter, we did 83 total. For April, there were 22. May, there was 34. And June, there was 27. And that's back in that, in May, there was a lot of, a lot of COVID situation going on. And that's actually, that's down 28% from the last, from this, from last month, I'm sorry. And a lot of that, believe me, it was, you know, they can tell you at the hospital, a lot of places just could not take COVID patients, even from the rural hospitals, and just keeping a finger on the pulse right now. I know a lot of colleagues elsewhere, especially in the Houston area, where they're just overindated with COVID patients, and they can't even get a lot of them transferred out to other facilities. It's, it's been a real nightmare, and it seems to be getting, getting worse. Were there any questions on the call numbers or anything?
No, sir.
Okay. Next thing I just put on here, our average response times, again, in the city, it's three to five minutes, and to Marathon, 28, 30 minutes. One of the things, like, you know, we do a lot of calls to Double Diamond, those are like 12 to 15 minute response times. One of the big problems that we've been having lately, and I think I talked about this at the last quarterly meeting also, are the, the train crossings. We'll get, I know, over this last month, we've had a number of times that either responding to a call, we were stopped by the train, had to go around, or especially from calls that were at Double Diamond, there are a number of times we got stopped and had to back up and go all the way around. And unfortunately, by the time radioing dispatch, and dispatch calls the train, and the train, or the train company, and then the train gets the message, they've already started up, and a lot of times were blocked again anyway. So, our calls returning to the hospital have, have buried a lot because of a lot of train issues, especially when they block history, which is our major crossing to get, you know, two EMS calls on the south side. Let's see, go to the next page. Okay, on some of the supplemental information, I just want to do a COVID-19 update. A lot of that I just talked about a minute ago, the EMS responses. I don't have an exact number, but, you know, early on, we're not seeing as many this month. But last month, we did, we did see a lot. And I, you know, when I say every other, every other call we got was a, was COVID-related. Today alone, we had three air transports. One of those was a COVID-related serious patient that was transferred out. One of the, on our PPE supply status, right now, we're doing really good. Stephanie Elmore, our EMC, she's been on top of it every week, submitting the star request through TIDAM. And with, with Border Rack and the J-Rack combined, the Border Rack has been overseeing Connie with Border Rack oversees the supply when it goes to Pecos. And Stephanie's been really good about just heading over, picking up our stuff, and getting, getting supplies for everybody. All the, all the emergency agencies in our, in our county, also in Presidio County, Jeff Davis County, and, and even for the hospitals, when they get these supply requests, she brings them all over, and we, we've got those. So, I appreciate everything that Stephanie's done on that, that part. She really kept up with that, talking with Al with TIDAM in El Paso, and we were able to, when we had the mobile testing at the fire station on Saturday, and Stephanie was there from 7:30 in the morning till 5 o'clock that afternoon to make sure everything went really well. I stayed there to help out as I could. Al from TIDAM came down also to make sure everything was going. And these people, they come down to do the mobile test, they are, it's an understatement to say that they are overworked. I mean, they are just, they, they had just come from El Paso, doing several hundred of the mobile tests. And I think we did 153 here, and everything went very smoothly. And they're, they're literally calling people from everywhere. I know three, three of the people came from Houston. They flew in on a red eye to El Paso, and then three of them were from El Paso, did a great job on that. Not, not any problems. Everything went really well on, on that part. And we were able to talk to Al with TIDAM, and he, they're keeping the supply chain going. So, if we need something, they're there, they're there to help us. And right now, we're doing really good. We're, we're doing a lot of, the burn rate's higher for us now. When it first started, it wasn't, but the burn rate for replacing N95 masks for each of the patients, every time we encounter one of those, started stacking up. So, we're, we are going through a lot of the, the protective gear that, that we need. Let's see, item C, grant assistance, one of the things I looked at. Of course, it's very, there's, there's a lot of things out there, but the one particular one that, that affects EMS mainly through the, through FEMA, we grab this real quick, sorry. We've got papers everywhere, so. Through the US Fire Administration and through FEMA, they have the program for helping the EMS agencies to offset a lot of things. One of the things we don't, we're fortunate to, is not having to have a back, a backflow of people having to come in, and they would re, you know, they can reimburse that. The, the one, the one thing for EMS agencies and fire agencies, or whoever, whatever assistance you want, we have to go through a sponsor agency, and we've been working with Rooster County and through the EMC, where they can submit requests for reimbursement for us through their grant portal. It all has to be bundled into whatever they submit. We're going to wait and see how far this goes, if the, how far the supply chain lasts, or if we have to purchase. I know before, when the, a lot of this stuff was not available, where it was going to all the high, high-risk areas, and I was purchasing things, I'm probably over, somewhere between $1,000 and $2,000 just out of, you know, our, out of my budget to purchase items. The, of course, a lot of it, the prices have just gone sky-high. They weren't what they were before, but that's, that's just the way it's going right now. One of the good things that we were able to find out, Jessica was able to connect me with two new pharmaceutical companies that, a lot of the pharmaceuticals, especially in EMS and the hospitals, they're just on, you know, continuous backorder. They're hard to get, you can't find them. And we, she found us a company that they, they guarantee to have everything every day. And we were able to resupply a lot of our, our pharmaceuticals that were getting close, that we weren't able to get from our regular EMS suppliers, and they had them, and now we're fully, fully stocked with those hard-to-get pharmaceuticals. So, that, that helped us quite a bit. Let's see. Also, in regard to equipment and supplies, today, when Jessica was on the, at the J-Rack, Border Rack meeting, on the Zoom meeting, the, the J-Rack ordered foggers and disinfectants to disinfect ambulances. And they, they tried it out with the Odessa Fire Department last week, and they said it was, it was wonderful. It worked great. So, now they're going to be, J-Rack's going to be shifting, I'm sorry, shipping out these foggers and disinfectant to all the, all the participants through J-Rack, and ours is supposed to be coming sometime next week. So, that, that's great. That's a very expensive machine and the disinfectants. And fortunately, we were able to get that at no charge from J-Rack. Some of the other things we were trying to look at, of course, there's the, the federal grants. They had the AFG grant that ended, I believe it was in April, and they reestablished one back early in May, but it was a fast act, $100 million that went out to a lot of the agencies for COVID supplies. Not sure where that's going to go. So far, the, the AFG assistance for, for the firefighter grant, it has to go through congressional approval, and for 2021, they haven't done that yet. So, not knowing how that secondary COVID one went, taking some of that money, what, what's going to come up next year. So, we'll, we'll see where that goes. Let's see, number two, on our EMS response billing, we're still, no change. We're still at our $750 base rate, $15 per loaded mile, no transport patients, no charge. That's, there's no insurance company, Medicare, anybody that will pay for going and just seeing the person and, and not charging. So, it's just a lot of places charge a little bit if you go, but we, we have no charge for that, for people. Number three. This is a pre-inspection. Let me grab it.
One second, please.
We had a, every, every two years, we get our EMS license renewed. This year, because of the COVID-19, everybody was extended from, our area is normally April 30th. So, the expiration for licenses are July, July 31st for this upcoming renewal. And one of the things that we do is, we have a, a pre-inspection survey. The, your area department of health representative, he sends out a form 30 days before they come down to do a compliance survey, and they look over your paperwork. They do a vehicle inspection, and they give you any recommendations on updating your policies, procedures, and everything that, that you have. The, if you have vehicle issues, supplies, and all those stuff, they can result in violations. A deficiency is something that they recommend that you update or change, and a violation is something that you did not have. We had, during that survey, when they came down, we had three deficiencies. This was, and this was January 17th of 2018. It was two years and six months ago. The main, the main deficiency, two of them involved our QA, QI, our quality assurance and our quality improvement policy. One of the things that they did is they, they had updated a new policy where there was more involvement, of course, with your medical director. And also, if you do product evaluations to improve service, you know, for patients, that you have documentation. The one thing we didn't have was, even though you did a assessment, depending on how your service is set up for your protocol, with the medical director, we did not have a form that documents this. So, they give you 30 days to, to do this, and we did, we complied with it. There's a copy on the, that was sent to y'all, where we were given the actual deficiency notice, and that, they, they show you that right there when you're standing there, and you sign it on the little tablet, and that's it, and then they mail it to you, and then you comply. We complied, changing our policy, adding a form, which I've also attached, what we did for that deficiency. So, two of those were involved in that part, updating the QA, QI, and, and for a form for the QA, QI. And those were done. The other one was participation in J-Rack. J-Rack is our home area. Border Rack is more for El Paso. Right now, they're combined together because of the pandemic, and we have been active participants since that day. We have been now. Every week, we have a meeting, where we're, a Zoom meeting where we are participating in that. And of course, all this information we get on the status of the hospitals, status of supplies, getting the fogger and all this other stuff. So, that, that was also, was noted on, in 2018, that even though it was listed, when they verified it, it showed that the provider did actually participate. We still do participate. We, each year, you renew with the, with the rack, and that comes up in August. And, and then we start our, our participation. Of course, like I said, right now, everything's kind of just at odds with the pandemic because of the weekly meetings rather than where they do it monthly. Some of the specialized meetings are quarterly, so that, I don't know when that's going to go back to normal. So, we'll, we'll find out hopefully in August, when that one's backed up. Let's see. And then also back on the pre-inspection, because of the, the deficiencies being corrected, our EMS provider license was renewed on May 1st, 2018, two years ago, with no deficiencies or violations at the time. Now, right now, what they do is normally they do another pre-inspection. They do it every two to three years, and of course, with the pandemic, they're not doing that right now. So, our license, we just, we just renewed it. It's currently, it's been, all the fees paid, and the license has been accepted. Of course, in Austin, they're really short-staffed on doing this. They're going piece by piece. So, our, our license is current, current, and is considered, or it shows renewal in progress. So, it, until they get everything, all the information, of course, they have to vet the employees that you put on there to make sure that they're certified before they add them to it. So, that is in progress. It, I'm, I'm confident it'll be done before the expiration date, but if it's not, it's continued as current until they finish their service. See. Yeah, anything next on that? See if there's anything else. Oh, one of the things I want to also let y'all know, we, we, we've hired a, another new employee, a new EMP. She starts in August. She's actually a hometown girl. She was born here, grew up here, moved away, and now she wants to come back, so that's great. She knows the community. She knows, you know, everybody around here, so that'll, that'll be great. She's going to start in early August. And so, we've got, we've still got another, another position to, to fill, a minimum of one, maybe two. And we have five people that we're waiting to have interviews with to continue to hire more people. And I have four, four part-time people, two more that I've added on. So, we're doing good there. Other than that, our crews are, crews are working hard, especially with this heat and with the COVID-19 situation. Wearing the PPE and all this stuff is not very comfortable, and they're doing a great job. They're doing a fantastic job, especially with this pandemic going on. I think that's everything I have. Do y'all have any questions, or?
Y'all are doing a great job, Mike, and great report also. And, you know, I'm glad you got relicensed, and also that you're adding more folks to your staff. You know, I've kind of run into them every once in a while, and they all have great attitudes. So, that goes back to you. So, thank you all very much.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate that. They're, they're tough. They're, a lot of, a lot of people wouldn't be able to continue to stand up with what's going on here, and they're, they're, they're doing a really good job, so I appreciate that. I appreciate it.
Please forward that to them.
I sure will. I sure will.
Any questions?
Yes, I have a question. I'm wondering on the meetings that y'all are having weekly, do we get a report or anything like that? Just to know what's going on?
We, I haven't. I, you know, most of it, they just, it's on, you know, on the Zoom, they said, they talk about all of this. There's, I don't know if somebody's actually giving, you know, documenting, because it's a Zoom. They normally have a secretary that documents the, the meeting. a Zoom, they normally have a secretary that documents the the meeting. We I haven't seen any of the reports forwarded. I that's something I can, I mean, if the if the city would like to know what's going on with the with the, you know, with the Border Rack and J-Rack on the weekly meeting, I can I can surely summarize what happened and and send the send it to the city manager weekly if you if you also desire.
That would be nice.
Okay, that's that's not a problem. I I get an update on it. If I'm if I don't get to go to it, there's there's at least one of our people, a lot of times too, that do attend that. I'll I'll see if they actually have summarized something that we can have forwarded to us and then I can forward it. If not, we can summarize that and and send the team. That that's a great idea and I'll I will I'll do that. I I know today, one of the just one of the big things that came out of it was the the sanitizing of the the vehicles and getting the the machines and the and the disinfectants and a lot of the other stuff. Of course, with the J-Rack, you have all the hospital providers also and there there's a lot of times, there's a lot of bickering between the two hospo or all the hospitals that are involved just because the the patient load, but we can we can sort of that out and I can at least summarize and and send you all something, but that would not be a problem.
Thank you.
Sure, you bet.
Okay, anybody else? Thank you, Mike.
You're quite welcome. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
And I'll get on that. I'll start to get summarized as soon as I can and get that to y'all.
Okay, thanks.
Uh huh, you bet.
Okay. To number nine, action items to be accompanied by a brief statement of facts, including where funds are coming from.
Excuse me.
Oh, I'm sorry. Man, no wonder he's sitting there staring at me. That's just, I apologize. Go ahead. Item three. Or item two, rather, I'm sorry, item two.
City manager.
Peter went off. Got to find him. Okay.
Yeah, so item two is discuss GA twenty eight, twenty nine, the differences in the governor's executive orders and any impacts on restaurants, bars and wearing of masks. We certainly, you know, in your report, Mayor, talked a little bit about GA twenty eight. I know Rod spoke about it as well. In the packet, we included a series of emails that that were exchanged a week and a half ago with Counselor, well, the original email came out to all the county officials and the city officials. And then, of course, for for Toma reasons, Counselor Stevens' reply really only included you, Mayor, as well as Rod and myself. And it it was in relation really to a question that was being asked about can we as a city open up or make modifications to GA twenty eight? And so the the call to action at the time was, you know, would the city reconvene to contemplate that? And through certainly some immediate discovery, it was very clear and apparent that GA twenty eight spoke specifically about the bars not being opened. And the the question at hand was was really relative to GA twenty nine. In GA twenty nine, which was identifying facial coverings and wearing a mask in public, there could be, you know, the county or the city could could look at making adjustment on that if you had less than twenty active cases. So with that being said, I think some of the sequencing of the the email brought to light some of the elements where, you know, the city has has really been attacked and been some very disingenuine statements made about several elected officials. I know about myself, too. And so I think the the local paper here got wind of it from the one individual and printed really not a very thorough story. I would consider very poor journalism to not come back and have a full discussion with both sides of the party. And so we really wanted to make sure this was queued up this evening to give ample discussion on what we were trying to accomplish from a city and and actually have a real genuine discussion. So Counselor Stevens, I don't know if I missed anything. Do you want to?
No, I I I think you hit the key points, Eric. I thought it worthwhile to include the whole email exchange for the rest of the council because in essence, council was attacked for not supporting businesses and residents, which I strongly disagree with. You know, and when the email came in on July eleventh, I responded within two hours with an email. I placed a phone call to the individual after it was learned that, you know, we didn't have the authority to modify the governor's orders. I was told, well, they had talked with the governor's office to this date. Received any feedback about who by name or by phone number? And I just found it, as Eric said, very disingenuous on the part of the individual to to have raised that. I I did learn as part of the discussion that, you know, that same individual had made some very derogatory comments against us as a council on the June twenty third meeting. The exact quote is included within. It's on page thirty four. Basically, I'll just read you the quote. It says, I'm on a Zoom meeting watching the city clowns. I'm embarrassed in my hometown. It's truly a shit show. If I lived in Alpine, I would get rid of these fools. I took great offense to that, pushed back dramatically. And I just think that is totally unfair of someone to say. Now, they certainly have their opinions. I get all that, but my view of this council has done all it's can within the requirements to try and maintain businesses. And for that individual to have not come back and provided the name of the individual they spoke with at the governor's office after multiple phone calls, after multiple emails, is that I find disingenuous. And since this is all part of the city record anyway, as all of our email is, I thought it just appropriate to make sure that all of council was brought up to speed. Now, I I I think, you know, clearly businesses and particularly restaurants and bars are challenged. I would note that this particular bar did figure out that they could do takeaway because nothing precluded that. I even got some feedback that they've opened up as a restaurant. I'll let them go figure out how they deal with the Texas Alcoholics and Beverage Commission because if more than fifty one percent of their revenue is derived from liquor sales, it is still a bar and they would therefore be their liquor license, they would be in not compliance with that, but that's their issue to go work with T B T A B C. I think, as Eric's already talked about, and thanks to to Chris, to Heather and Cynthia for the meeting tomorrow. And thanks for the and you're going to see a resolution coming up here shortly that says the city will support businesses being able to use sidewalks and city property to open up so they can continue on. I think that's a step in the right direction. Clearly, restaurants struggle, but I want to thank everyone for the support they provided as we move forward. So unless there's any questions, I'm not sure there's anything else to talk about there.
Well, I wanted to comment on it, Rick. I just got your first email that I read and it was very demeaning, very derogatory, and it was aimed at the council and I take special offense to that. Yeah, here's a council, we, you know, people don't understand that we it's not us that are shutting them down. We need that that revenue that they derive from their sales tax. So if they're losing out, we're losing out. And, you know, I'm the commander of the of the post here, American Legion Post. We're a business and it's hurt us, but we will follow the letter of the law. You know, we have to in order to issue of the COVID. The Legion, we donate a hundred thousand dollars or better to the community for different funding, like the the Family Crisis Center, Boy Scouts, the Girl Scouts, the Saul Ross and all that. So, yeah, we're in dire straits also. Our revenue has been cut down, but we're still continuing to have to our bartenders and we're paying them and we just use them in different capacities. But I was very, very offended at those words. City elections. If that person finds it that we are clowns, that we're not capable in the city, why don't they step forward and see the that we're in? And I think you say we're here best for the city and for all the citizens of Alpine. So, you know, we're in a difficult position, damn if you do, damn if you don't. So, yes, and I found I again, I found it highly offensive.
Thanks, Mayor. What's particularly disappointing, this individual no longer lives in Alpine, they live in El Paso.
Correct. Correct. And so, you know, that's it's it's just, I don't know. I was I didn't want to reply to that because I was so upset about it and I talked to Eric about it. I think I might have used the wrong type of language in there because I was infuriated at how she attacked our city. So best to keep my
Okay, we're now ready for item number three, I think.
Yes, sir. Now you're on.
Okay, so one of the things I've been working back and forth with Kirsten Moody because, as you know, I'm delinquent in getting Parks Board Representative assigned for Ward Five. We've had a dialogue back and forth, but as part of that, one of the question is, do we want to include up to two alternate members on our advisory boards in order to assure that we have sufficient voting members in the event that that they cannot have quorum? This is that a recommendation came from the Parks Board because they've not always been able to have quorum. One of the recommendations has been relative to the Parks Board that we might want to add a couple of people that represent the broader community at large, potentially from the Friends of the Park. And the other one would be as a representative from either the Alpine Independent School District or Saul Ross State University because they also have, you know, members of their organization that participate and use, you know, the parks. So what I wanted to do was, and I'm happy to do the legwork on it and come back with the recommendations to council on modifications to the ordinance that provides that, but I just wanted to use this as an opportunity to get feedback from council members. Do you think that's a good idea to go do? And if there's enough interest, I'll go put it together and come back with a recommendation on change of ordinance.
It's a great idea.
I I for one thing think it's a fantastic idea because when you have committees like that, it's always hard to get a hundred percent representation. So having the alternates, I think, would would benefit tremendously in this, especially now when we're revitalizing our park and whatnot. It's crucial that we always have a quorum. So I'll support that.
Thanks, Mayor. Thanks, Maria. Ramon, your thoughts? You agree?
I think go for it. We can get somebody else to fill it.
Thanks, Betty.
Yep, I'm I'm right there beside you.
Okay, Lucy?
Definitely.
I'll go work it. Thanks very much.
Thank you, sir.
Hey, Gio, can you go ahead and mute mic, Scudder?
Is that it? Yeah. Okay. Let's go ahead and move on to the action item. Item number nine, action items to be accompanied by a brief statement of fact, where expert from acting after being called upon by the mayor or mayor pro tem. Citizens are required to state their name, the ward in which they reside. Priority will be given to citizens of Alpine and those who own business or property in the city. Individual individuals who do not live in is this or property.
All right.
Okay.
Yeah, Honorable Mayor, City Council, I think I I simply added this one to the agenda in case we needed to take action, but I think we can table this this item this evening.
I I propose we take no action to amend the ordinance.
Okay.
I second.
Okay, all any discussion on this? Seeing none, others in favor, right hand? Oppose? Like sign, motion carries. Thank you, sir.
All right, and then item number two is to discuss, consider and take appropriate action approving resolution twenty twenty dash zero seven dash zero nine, resolution of the city of Alpine, Texas, supporting outdoor dining expansions as a protective measure to combat the spread of COVID nineteen. We've got backup documentation in your packet and I know we've talked about it earlier in the council meeting.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I propose that council approve resolution twenty twenty dash zero seven dash zero nine, a resolution of the city of Alpine, supporting outdoor dining expansions as protective measures to combat the spread of COVID nineteen and help our most challenged businesses, the restaurants, have another opportunity to make sales.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion's made, discussion. Any discussion? Great idea. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Oppose? Motion carries. Thank you. And we'll move over to item ten, city council comments and answers, and we'll start with Maria this time.
Well, I don't really have a lot to say other than those reports were pretty amazing. That was great. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Ramon?
The same thing to voice what Maria just said is kudos to all the great reports and thank you very much for the wonderful work that's being done out there in the city of Alpine. And I do have a couple of comments. One is the the CARES Act information that was shared to us by Eric today and the funding possibilities for the future. Keep that in mind, especially as we go into preparing for the the city county emergency services workshop coming up in 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 August. Seems like there's some opportunity there for for some funding. And the other, the second thing is, I read somewhere today or yesterday that apparently Congress has is about to or maybe have already voted on funding for wildlife corridor protection, which means that there would be monies available, I'm assuming via grants to various entities throughout the United States to map and identify, map and conserve wildlife corridors in 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 the in vicinity of their communities. And since we are, it seems when it's hot and dry, we get a lot of wildlife coming down from the hills into the city. Maybe we could start looking in the future alongside our educational partners at Saul Ross and maybe, you know, apply for grants and let's see what we can do with conservation protection of wildlife along wildlife corridors here in Alpine.
Thank you, sir. That was very good. And we'll go ahead and we'll move on to Ms. Fitzgerald.
Yes, I think we had a very good meeting this time and I think I think we're we're succeeding in making this a good city to live in.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. And we'll move over to Casamon Escobedo.
First, I wanted to say thank you to Eric for the good budget support. It was very well put together. And of course, with everybody else that helped you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Mr. Stevens?
Thanks, Mayor. One, I'll I'll echo everyone else's comments. The reports are terrific and they continue to get better with greater depth. I think it's really helpful for us as council when we get that level of insight and perspective because then we're knowledgeable about what's going on and we can lend the right level of support. I I think it's encouraging that the COVID numbers are are clearly headed in the right direction and I I believe a lot has to do with people are wearing masks. I think that's making a big difference. It's a continued demonstration of driving the numbers down. I hope we can get back down to zero, but I do think it's going to take some continued determination on all of ours part to minimize the spread. To minimize the spread by wearing masks. I know it's a challenge for all of us as we watch what goes on from a school perspective. I don't envy the, the school board in terms of the decisions they've got to make. And the challenges that parents have to make, including looking at my own kids. And looking at how they're going to worry about their grandkids or my grandkids, their kids, from a school perspective. Because we all worry about that bump back up. But, but I am encouraged as well, having listened at the last school board meeting on the work that they're doing. To improve the HVAC systems. One, that's one of the big drivers that can demonstrate the spread, particularly when people stay in an enclosed area. For longer than an hour to an hour and a half, so improving HVAC system is important. So compliments again back to, to Eric and Chris and, and Heather for facilitating the meeting tomorrow. I hope we have a lot of restaurateurs that get back engaged or engaged in that meeting tomorrow. Not only to look at the support they need for outside dining. But also to make sure that their filters are cleaned, to really protect those droplets. Because I think that's another important part to be able to support keeping COVID down. Still looks like we've got a long ways before vaccines, so it's going to be up to us individually to, to manage the things we need to do. To minimize the spread so we can get back to business as quickly as we can. So, Mayor, thanks very much and I appreciate your comments earlier.
Yes, sir, no, thank you for supporting our, our council. You know, we're very, you know, government employees are a lot of times underrated and belittled. But, you know, we know for ourselves that we're trying to do the best we can. And anybody that wants to sit in our chairs are quite welcome to throw the head in the ring and run for election. Okay, and I want to thank the citizens of, of Brewster County and Alpine. As I drive around or I go to the store and I've been pretty much self-isolated, get a lot of reports, where you been? I'm at home, but I see more and more folks wearing the mask. And I see them stop at the doors at the business locations and put the mask on as they enter. And also wiping down their carts and whatnot. So I think the City of Alpine is doing a fantastic job in trying to get a hold on this COVID. And again, the sooner we get a hold of it, the sooner we start opening up more facilities and get our. And get them back on, get, get our economic going, economics going again. Because it does hurt us, you know, people don't believe from taxes and not receiving any sales tax or hotel motel. You know, it, it hurts us, luckily, you know, we have a very judicial, responsible organization in the, in our. That has kept going. Okay, what else on the agenda then? Is it Steven?
I move, we adjourn.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Not debatable, and we're adjourned, thank you all very much.
Aye.